Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Wednesday, July 9th, 2014 Reno City Planning Commission meeting. If I can get everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is as it was signed by the United States of America. And we are proud for this change, one nation under our eye, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see a full house tonight. I am going to make an adjustment to our agenda this evening. And that is that item number six, unfinished business, is now going to follow item number seven, public hearings. I'm doing that for a couple of reasons. The agenda items in public hearings, number seven should go rather easily and will not take near the time that number six appears it's going to take this evening. And that will also open up some more seats for those of you who are standing and you will be able to sit and enjoy this evening's events. I hope. With that, Michelle, can we have roll call, please?
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Apollo Levis is absent. Charles Reno.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Jason Wusley is absent. Dany Stapleton is also absent. Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Thank you. Michelle, next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any requests to speak forums for public comment that are not based on one of our agenda items?
No, we do not.
Okay. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak under this public comment agenda item that is not related to one of our public hearing items or the unfinished business item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it, take it to item number four, approval of minutes from June 4th. Commissioners?
Commissioner Kaufman, and so I'll move to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Taylor, a second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? None. Four zero on the approval. Thank you. Next on our agenda is city council liaison reports.
None tonight.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to public hearings. Item number one is LDC 1400040, Moana Mini Storage Expansion. Okay. Michelle, please let the record show that at 6:04 Commissioner Levis arrived and is Will the applicant's representative please come forward? And before you introduce yourself and start, I would like disclosures. Commissioner Taylor, start with you. Do you have any disclosures?
Commissioner Kaufman, I drove by the site.
Commissioner Weiskie, or Chair Weiskie, excuse me, I've also visited the site. Commissioner Reno?
I visited the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
I visited the site.
Thank you. With that, will the applicant representative please introduce himself?
Sure.
You will have 15 minutes to discuss your project with us.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Railey with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of the project applicant. I know you have a full agenda. I'll be brief, but I would like to just give a quick summary of the project. You might remember this project. We came in last year with a special use permit to expand the existing Moana Mini Storage facility. We have since amended that request. I'm taking a little different approach. I'm going to put up the original site plan for you. And as you can see, we had kind of a horseshoe-shaped building last time, this being the building. One...
Sure. So that all the applicants representative and all the speakers tonight know, we do not have a back-projection screen this evening. So whatever you are projecting, we, the planning commission, may or may not be able to see all details on it.
Got it.
So, Michelle, can you at least turn the lights down just a little bit more and give us a better chance? Thank you. Please, continue.
Great. And as you can see, on the north side of the project, there's some existing multifamily units. Those units are built to their setback, and last time we were built to our minimum setback. So the distance wasn't that far. What we've done, that was approved for 28 units. We're actually only requesting one additional unit at 29, but we're going to go two stories on the building, and we've substantially increased the size of the units themselves. So we're about a third larger in overall building square footage. But by going two stories, we're able to set back the building significantly. So as you can see, the majority of the building's set back over 80 feet from the property line, rather than the 10 feet that was originally proposed, where we just have, it's more of an L shape now, so we just have that one little corner that's adjacent to the residential, and it has set back double the distance of what was previously approved. We did work with staff on the architecture to get a residential feel to it. As you can see, we've added some faux windows, trellises, and that sort of thing to the side of the building to give it kind of a residential feel. That, and added the landscaping in accordance with the transit corridor standard, so it should be a very nice addition to the neighborhood. Derek Wilson from our office, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, was the project manager on this and did speak with the property owners to the north and contacted other adjoining properties, and everybody was in favor that we spoke to. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Staff, welcome again.
This is Lauren Barrera with the Community Development Department. Staff agrees with the applicant's presentation. As Mike said initially, there were concerns regarding the architecture. However, with the revised elevations, it's addressed these concerns. Within new proposal and conditions, staff can make all of the applicable findings and recommends approval. And then with this, I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you, Lauren. With that, I will open public comment on this agenda item. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forums on this agenda item?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who has not filled out a request to speak forum who would like to speak on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public agenda, or public comment on this agenda item, bring it back to commission for questions, discussion, and/or a motion. Commissioner Reno?
I'll discuss. Yeah, Commissioner Reno, I think that this is, after looking at at least the property to the east, the building, the home there, and it being two stories, I think this is a good fit for the neighborhood. I think that it'll work out nicely, and it'll help to densify and kind of make continuity there.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'll make a motion. In the case of LDC 1400040, Moana Mini Storage Expansion, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you very much. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second that, and I can make all the findings also.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda item, agenda, is LDC 14-00042, Dolan Lexus SUP. If the applicant's representative will approach the podium, at this time, I would like disclosures from commissioners, starting with you, Commissioner Taylor.
I visited the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaufman?
I also visited the site, and I met with the applicant's representative, plus received some emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiskie, Chairman Weiskie, as did I. Commissioner Reno?
I did as well. I visited the site, met with the applicant, and the applicant representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
I visited the site, spoke with applicant's representative.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Angela Foose, representing the applicant. The project before you tonight is a request for a special use permit to allow automobile sales within the South Virginia TOD. The site is located on South Virginia and Green Acres Drive. This is part of the South Virginia TOD secondary corridor. So as most of you will remember, over the last year and a half, we went through a process of updating the TOD design standards and zoning code, and out of that came a change to the floor area ratio requirement. So in a secondary corridor, there is no FAR requirement. The existing building that's there was built back in the 1980s. It's been used as a car dealership for, gosh, probably the last 25 years. It has been vacant for the last four years. The Dolan family has purchased this property within the last two months, and they intend to demolish the existing building that's about 33,000 square feet and replace it with a new car dealership that will be twice the size at about 68,000 square feet. It's a two-story building, and like I said, it's going to be twice the size as the last building. It's set back about 100 feet from South Virginia, which is actually closer than the existing building, so it's closer to conformance with the TOD standards than what was there before. The only thing that's triggered with this application is a special use permit because it's automobile sales. And like I said, it's, for the last 25 years or so, it's been used as an automobile sales site. So the changes that are being proposed are actually going to improve the site, really improve the area. It's kind of turned into a blighted area just because it's been vacant. There's not much activity. There's a lot of weeds growing on the site. So it's actually, it's very exciting for the surrounding property owners, as well as for the property owner itself. The front, South Virginia and Green Acres Drive, we've added the pedestrian amenities here and here. We have 20% landscaping over the entire site. Again, everything complies with regular standard code requirements. In terms of parking, this site requires, based on just city code requirements, requires 322 parking stalls. Because it's in a TOD, we can request a 50% parking reduction. We are asking for a reduction of 43%, so it's still well within the 50%. The parking that we have is customer parking and ADA parking over here, customer parking over here, and then more employee parking over here. This area in here will be used for inventory. And we've decided not to stripe this because, again, it's going to be used for inventory. So depending on how many cars are back there, the way that the cars are parked is going to be different. They may be vertical, they may be horizontal, depending on how much is there. You can change the look. When you enter the site, you can enter from Green Acres Drive, come through here, and this is your service bay through here. So you'll drop your car off. This is all of the office area. Back here is going to be 40 service bays. This is about twice the size of the existing Lexus on Mill Street, so it's a substantially larger project. We have two changes from the application, and you all should have received a copy of those changes. Again, one was related to the parking, so where you're asking for a 43% reduction, we're allowed to have up to 50%. Staff had no concerns with that. The other change was related to the sidewalks along here. One of the design standards, as part of the TOD, is that when you have a front, you have to have a street followed by five feet of landscaping, followed by five feet of sidewalk. We're maintaining that here. There's existing sidewalk. We're going to tear that out and put it up to code. So we'll have the street followed by the landscape strip, followed by the sidewalk. This is our access into the project here. So what we're asking for is this area back here, that we leave the existing sidewalk. There's a four-foot sidewalk there now. It's in good condition. We're going to leave that rather than tear it out, and we're going to put in more landscaping here. These trees here are mature. They've been there for a long time, so we're going to keep them. It didn't seem to make sense to tear out existing mature trees, only to have to put in a sidewalk and then put in more trees. So the change, again, from what was submitted in the application to what's before you tonight, is just that we ask that we leave the existing sidewalk and put in more landscaping in that area. So you'll have street followed by sidewalk, followed by a landscape strip. And when we think about pedestrian connectivity, you know, what are we connecting people to? Obviously, on South Virginia, you're going to have a pedestrian connection to other stores and businesses. When you come on Green Acres, you would potentially walk on your sawdust here and come into the site. There's no reason for anyone to walk down here. There's a cul-de-sac down here and a freeway over here. The parcel that's adjacent right here is owned by Endot, so that's never going to be developed. So there's no reason for anyone to have to come down here. Again, there's an existing sidewalk on this side, as well as an existing sidewalk on this side. So we are meeting the intent of the TOD by providing a safe and secure pedestrian connection. We're just not complying with the five foot of landscaping followed by the five-foot sidewalk. And beyond that, you know, we comply with everything else in the code. Staff is recommending approval, and I'll be available to answer questions. I'm going to reserve the rest of my time to answer questions during discussion period.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle, would you reserve 10 minutes for Angela if she needs rebuttal time, please? Thank you. Vern, welcome.
Good evening. Vern Close, senior planner. Mr. Foose adequately identified the request. The proposed changes to the parking, the parking reduction, is well within the allowance of 50%. That can be considered based on the information, the parking information they provided. It was through a study from APA, American Planning Association, therefore, you know, comparing similar types of uses and what their parking requirements were. So this was well within those bounds. Also, the allowance of having this existing sidewalk remain as it is, that is something that is allowed because they aren't really touching that portion of it, and the areas that really would be of concern are Long Virginia Street and the first, up to the first driveway on Green Acres. So staff agrees with those modifications, and I provided you all with a memo stating such. Another thing I would like to point out is that generally with car dealerships out in front, they just park the cars in rows. They're just stacked up there like a parking lot. We had discussions with the applicant and what the concept is here is all the decorative paving, which is in this orange color here is where, oh, you guys can't see it, is the orange on the display up there, and you have a color map in your memo also. That area is for auto display, and it also has movable trees and planters. So the idea is to put the cars up, not just packed, but, you know, at angles so that they're displayed, more like in a showroom style than just parked in rows. So I would just like to make that clear, that that's where the intent is of this area, have it as a display area, not just a bunch of rows of parked cars. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
With that, I will open public comment on this agenda item. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forums on this agenda item?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who has not filled out a request to speak forum who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Yes, ma'am?
Yes. I haven't filled out a form.
If, yeah, on this agenda item regarding the dealership, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. If you have, if you want to speak on a later agenda item, there's orange forums over here. You can fill that out. So with seeing and hearing no one wanting to speak on this item, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion, questions, or a motion. Commissioner Kaufman?
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Reno?
I have a quick question. Angela, excuse? Just really quick, I want to understand, over on the southeast corner, the exit onto Virginia Street, is that a reciprocal access easement down there? And if so, is there plans for the adjacent property owner?
You're talking about this corner right here?
Yes.
So this is an existing driveway that's always been there and will remain. This is the parcel line right here. The parcel that's adjacent is vacant, and at a time when they come in with development, there will be discussions on how they want to deal with access. But for now, we have the ability to use that for this project.
And it's two-way traffic both ways?
Yes. I'm trying to think if there's a median at that point so that you can't turn left coming out. But it's not. There's a middle lane. There's, you know, go on, South Virginia, there's two lanes going north, two lanes going south, and then there's a middle lane.
Okay. If I could. Bill Goff, senior civil engineer for the city of Reno. That existing access is actually wide enough. It encompasses both properties. They have access to both properties there. It's, the southern property also is very encumbered by the Dry Creek there. Development of it will be very, very difficult in the future. There is a existing, I'm sorry. There's an existing billboard on that site that they'll have to access through there. And then on South Virginia, there is, as she mentioned, four lanes, and with a median, it's not, there's not a median barrier. There is a median turn lane. There will be left access.
Okay.
It's a full movement access.
Okay. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing anything for the adjacent property.
Thank you.
Adverse.
Commissioner Kaufman?
In the case of LDC 14-00042, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Levis, I'll second the motion, and I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda is item number three, LDC 14-00036, Brookfield School Zone Change. If the applicant's representative will come forward, please. And at this time, I will start with Commissioner Reno with disclosures.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Chairman Weiskie, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Kaufman, and I visited the site.
Commissioner Taylor, I did the same.
Mike, welcome back.
Thanks. Good evening once again. Mike Railey with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of Brookfield School. The request for you tonight is a fairly simple zone change request. Having visited the site, I'm sure you saw, we are requesting to rezone a portion of the existing office complex from PO to PF in order to allow for an expansion of the Brookfield School. The city Reno code does not allow for schools in any commercial zoning district, only in residential zoning districts or the public facility designation. So I know there is some discussion in the staff report in regards to spot zoning for the property. I would like to reference the Heart to Hand School, which you recently approved as a zone change over on Reactor Way, is a very similar project. And in that staff report, I'd just like to read you some of the staff analysis, and it's also very similarly discussed in the staff report. But from that report, it said, "Spot zoning is generally discouraged because it does not provide for land use consistency. However, the PF zone is often used on a parcel-by-parcel basis to allow for specific public and institutional uses and is rarely applied to large tracts of land." So therefore, you can see we're consistent with that, with that idea. Furthermore, it says, "The Reno Municipal Code states that the purpose of the PF zoning district is to provide for public facilities and public services which may be in private ownership, including utility uses, parks and recreation areas, and institutions." Once again, this site is adjacent to the existing Brookfield School and a church. I think it's a good fit for the neighborhood in terms of what surrounds the property. I know there was concern that what uses would PF allow. Generally, it's very similar to the existing PO zone. Somebody said, "What about an obnoxious use, like a heliport, for example?" That would require further review. Number one, I don't think you could fit a heliport on this site, but if some obnoxious thing did come in like that, it is adjacent to residentially zoned property, so it would trigger a special use permit. So, like I said, I'm going to try to be brief. I have specific exhibits. I know you can't see very well, but if you have any specific questions, I'll reserve my time to answer those questions once staff gives their report.
Thank you very much. Michelle, would you reserve 12 minutes and 50 seconds for Mr. Railey? Vern, welcome back.
Vern Close, senior planner. Mr. Railey gave a pretty good overview of what I was going to say. Staff does agree that the zoning in this instance is appropriate for the site. If you look at what is allowed on the PF zone and what's allowed on the PO zone, they're very similar. Both zones require special use permits for the more objectionable types of uses, and given the size of the site and its location, we, staff believes that it is appropriate for the site. I did not, I received one phone call informational from a person who lived in the subdivision to the southwest there, and he just wanted to know what was going on, and he, once he understood, he was fine with it. I didn't receive any other correspondence or emails. Staff believes that all the findings can be made, and we are recommending approval by ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. With that, I will openly, open up public comment on this agenda item. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forums?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who has not filled out a request to speak forum on this agenda item who would like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, and closed public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion, comments, a motion. Commissioner Reno?
I'll give a motion. In the case of LDC 1400041, Featherlight of Reno, Inc.
No. Brookfield School, please.
I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one. Yes. Brookfield School Zone Change, sorry, in the, in the case...
Start over again with your LDC.
In the case of LDC 1400036, Brookfield School Zone Change, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve the zone map amendments by ordinance, and I can make the findings.
Thank you very much. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor?
I second the motion. I can make all the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda, item number four, LDC 14-00041, Featherlight of Reno. Will the applicant's representative come forward, please? And Commissioner Reno, I will start with you.
Yeah, I visited the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Chair Weiskie, as did I.
Commissioner Kaufman, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I did too.
Thank you very much. Welcome back again, Mr. Railey.
For the record, Mike Railey with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of Featherlight of Reno. Featherlight is an existing business that's been located for years at the corner of Second and Kitzke on tribal land. The tribe has plans to do a tribal use on that property, and so therefore, their lease was not renewed on that property. And they're proposing to relocate directly across Virginia Street from the Bonanza Casino. The site itself was formerly a landscape company and included their offices, as well as a maintenance yard and stockpiling of materials type of uses. Featherlight is a trailer sales and service business, so they'll be essentially storing inventory of trailers, much a trailer dealership, so to speak, and will have, occupy the existing office. With this request, it is in the transit corridor, will be providing pedestrian amenities in the form of a pedestrian path connecting along Bailey Drive down to Virginia Street. Virginia Street is very steep in that area, so it's not really a good retail site in terms of pedestrians walking up and down, but we will provide that connection, which is, we'll tie in with the existing bus pad. Also, we'll be revamping the existing landscaping that has died since the previous tenant left, as well as making sure everything is brought up to code standards in terms of slating on the fence and that sort of thing. The, it's highly compatible with all the adjoining uses. It's a much less intense use in terms of noise than the landscape business because they will have, you know, loading trucks and that sort of thing. There are apartments to the south. It's a great use for that because it's quiet, there's no nighttime activity in terms of noise and that sort of thing, so it's highly compatible with adjoining uses. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. We are in agreement with all the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Railey. Vern?
Vern Close, senior planner. This is a request for a trail sale, trailer sales use, requires a special use permit in the, in VETC. Basically, the issues that staff saw were upgrading landscaping and restoring it back to where it was, paving the areas where customers would come, and then providing all-weather service in the other areas so that there isn't erosion or dust created by the project. The use is very compatible with the area, and staff can make all the findings and is recommending approval. We did not receive any calls or correspondence related to this project. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Vern.
Thank you.
With that, I will open public comment on this agenda item. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forms on this agenda item?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak form? Hearing and seeing none, and we'll close the public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, discussion, motion?
I'll make this motion.
Commissioner Reno?
There you go. In the case of LDC 14-00041, Featherlight of Reno, Inc., based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second that, and I can also make the finding.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Thank you. Okay. Like I had hoped, didn't make a promise, but I had hoped public hearings would go fairly quickly. That should have opened up a few seats. I can tell you, though, for those of you who are standing up, we also have TVs out in the lobby if you would like to watch for a while from the TV outside. There may be some seats outside our area here. I would like to take a brief five-minute break and come back. And during that five-minute break, if, if we could have staff condense our reserved seating, if we've got extra reserved seats that we don't need, we've got a lot of people here, and I would like to accommodate as much of the public to be seated as possible. So we will re-adjourn at 6:40. Okay. Thank you very much for allowing us a little break and to kind of tighten things up in here. Before we get started, I would like to, if you haven't figured out already, there are a few rules, and I have a specific way in which I run a meeting. And, and it follows a pretty tight guideline. And one of the big things is that all the general public here tonight who wishes to speak is allowed three minutes to make comments or to ask questions. Your questions will not be answered at the time that you ask them. We commissioners will write those questions down, and will follow up and ask them for you. The applicant or applicant's representative does not respond or answer to the general public. They respond and answer to us, the planning commission. Okay? So with that, I'm going to ask you all to either, if you need to give any applause, do it right now and get it out of your system, or hold it until the end of the night, because there is no applause, there is no loud chit-chat that will disrupt my meeting, or anything else going on. If I have to stop the meeting and take another break so that we can all gain, regain our composure, I will be glad to do so. I've done it before, I'm sure I'll have to do it again someday. I hope this is not the day. So with that, I respect all of you and appreciate all of you being here tonight. I hope you also will in turn respect us and what we are going to do here tonight. With that, I am going to reopen case LDC 14-0023, West Meadows Estate. Mr. Krompottic, you have 15 minutes in which I will, you will start from scratch and give your presentation, just like this is the first night.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner John Krompottic with KLS Planning and Design here on behalf of the applicant. All of you know, I believe, Rob Fitzgerald. He's the, my day-to-day client, the lead manager with West Meadows Estates LLC. He's here as well. And I'd like to introduce, I'd like to say, as part of the team, but it's not fair to do so, but Mark Freese with NDOW. He's the wildlife biologist. Obviously, he's here because of his expertise in fairness to everybody that has a stake in this. As you all know, I've heard from every one of the commission and citizens in several neighborhood group meetings, that particularly mule deer habitat and the impacts of that have been a real concern in the community. So, we want to deal with it very forthright and responsibly. Also here this evening, I'm not going to touch on it at all, but one of the service issues that was a big deal at the last hearing was fire. Chief Hernandez, of course, is here to represent that. I'm not going to deal with any of it, other than let you know that we did negotiate to everybody's satisfaction, I believe, the trigger of the fire apparatus that the developer would have to pay for at a certain time to address impacts with respect to fire. What I'd like to, you know, there's been a lot of information, we've been at this for nine months, and it just seems to, there's, there's tons of emotion for good reason. People are threatened by this project. I still wonder, you know, it seems to me that people are thinking it's like the county because most of the people that I believe are against it are in the county, and the fact is, we're in the city right next to the county line, which happens to be the river on the west side. I think it boils down to perception of impacts related to the density and the land use that we have on the table. So I wanted to just focus on a few slides that I have prepared. I gave you guys a copy of it. Go through this and, and touch on this whole issue of land use and density. So there's our site, 199 acres.
John, before you go any further, I just want to remind you, because you weren't in the room earlier.
Yeah.
We do not have a rear projection screen, so anything you show over our shoulders had better, needs to be here before us.
It's, it's in there, there's, the one composite is there in some form, so I promise you're not getting shorted.
Thank you.
And, and I forgot to mention that Josh Vittori, who is our wildlife biologist, he's a biologist with JBR, and now it's JBR StanTech. He is working with the development team. He's going to be the gentleman who leads the mitigation, the wildlife mitigation plan preparation and study, and then deal with NDOW and whoever else is in the mix in that. So there's our site. Here is our land use. You know, the simple facts here are 98.6 acres of single-family. Last time we were at the podium, you guys recall, we were at five to the acre. We had a lot of pushback in the community. We respect that. We tried to get there to some extent on, hey, let's cut a deal. And that was the last meeting where Mr. Fitzgerald and I were present and actually involved in the presentation. And so we just, it wasn't arbitrary, it was about, let's go to the four to the acre. It's a very common suburban density in the city of Reno. So we used four to the acre on the usable area of 98.6 acres. It yields 394 units. Before, it was five and closer to 500 units. Now remember, that is on the usable area, 45% of the site, 90.5 acres is open space. It involves the area that we're going to have for restoration of mule deer habitat, of avoidance of the drainage ways, and of, of course, the trail system and the hillside area. And then we have, I have it carved out a little bit more precisely, but the 10 acres of commercial is four acres of NC, as you all know per the PUD handbook. That's really kind of the support commercial to the community, not this community, but the community at large, and of course, the neighborhood that we're trying to create here. And then six acres of the expanded, which is the very restricted part, which is three or four different uses that would be required with a special use permit. Next slide. So there's our base zoning, right? Again, it's similar to the other one. That one, by the way, has some basic circulation elements. Those are, you know, real conceptual, but do have meaning because of the spacing of the intersections that we'd have. We'd want one for the commercial, one for the east blob of single-family, and two for the bigger areas, just so you have some distribution of traffic. You would probably have deceleration lanes. Of course, this is further study with RTC and NDOT, and with traffic engineers that would be hired by the applicant at the appropriate time with a subdivision map and the special use permits. But you can get the idea there. That whole length of property is about a mile, so we have very good responsible spacing there that is directly opposite the main access to River Oak community. There again is our site. Here's what I wanted to talk about. This is, it's incredible level of misunderstanding of zoning, and it's just a complicated bundle of stuff, if you will. But so there's our site. There is SF6 zoning. So we're four to the acre, SF6 above us in more restricted terrain, seven to the acre is above us right there to the east into the west, east into the north. To the south, River Oak is zoned low-density urban. Remember, that's in the county, but it's urban. So if anybody tries to tell me that this is a suburban area, or excuse me, rural, it's not right. From a zoning perspective, we have urban and we have suburban, but there is no rural there. Multifamily adjacent to the, adjacent to it to the west, and then again SF6, which allows 70 to the acre in the city nomenclature. Taking another piece adjacent to the property, now that's across the river, of course. We all know about it. When you drive into the Verde at that point, you see kind of those industrial buildings. So that's zoned industrial. Good separation from our project also provides a nice employment base in Verde, so I think that's a good thing. But it's really to show you about what's going on in terms of mix of uses and intensity. And then there's the last slide. The area to the north is rural, that's the county rural, Washoe County designation, rural residential. And then you see all of the other property to the south is I.C.'s the big piece, and then Cabela's, Boomtown, and SF6 for the residential portion. Here's something that I think deserves mention because certainly some of the commissioners are going to have concerns about, what are we doing for the community? And I was looking at PUD findings, zone change findings, master plan considerations and findings today, and I thought, you know, it really is fundamental in putting out a vision of a property like this when you have 45% open space, that we do something for the public. And this was nobody, this was Mr. Fitzgerald and I working with staff and volunteering these improvements. Again, this is all public access and public improvements that will be triggered in the improvements. The timing of such would be done by, at the developer's expense. So what we have is the Fisherman Access Point. Let me back up, because, you know, you, one of the things you learn in planning from my perspective about how do you approach a piece of dirt like this, what does it give you? Well, when you see the mountain to the north and the river on the east side, and a couple of drainage ways and mule deer, you want to, that, that's what you have. So we're not trying to do a city park. What we're trying to do is amenities that work very well for this neighborhood and for this community, including the county, of course, the Verde community. So Fisherman Access Parking would be built at a certain point by the project with a trail system that gives you access to the river and then winds up to the north into the open space area. What's important here, too, is the connection to those lands to the north, so that we have an opportunity to connect trails to all of the adjacent properties, and we have a nice network of trails. This takes some work and cooperation with other property owners. Then you have on the east side, the Trailhead Parking. So that's next to a major drainage way. Of course, it would have to be out of it. An improved parking area, about 10 stalls, it's in the PUD handbook, I believe, I forget when the trigger was. They would go up to the north, and then it would also stub to a, an approved neighborhood park that is located in the Morton, Morton Garrison property, right? So that's it for the, the trail system. Just a little bit, I just show you kind of the big picture. You look at the site in relation to the city, I've heard a few people say that, boy, this is on the outskirts of the city, and you can see the city goes well west and well south. That's the city sphere map. And then one more map that shows an awful lot going on west and south of the site as well. And again, there's, you know, some pockets, and we got to respect everybody's turf here, work with the county residents directly across the street and directly across us to the west by the river. But really, it's predominantly been annexed to the city. One of the things I, I found also is real common source of misinformation is, and in all fairness, it's a pretty complicated process, but a lot of people are using the 159 as a reference point of zoning. I said, "It's off the table. There is no 159. Treat it as though it never belonged," because that was in the county. This is a city project, somebody, some city council 12 years ago, I believe, approved annexation of this property, way before Mr. Fitzgerald's time. And with annexation, you look at city types of densities and services. And so, when they did that, who knows? They may have wanted to do 300 or 400 lots, but they did a private water system and a private sewer system. We don't have a choice. We got to bring in all city services, a sewer interceptor, a water line a mile from the site, over a mile down at the roundabout, and all that goes with city services, including curb gutter and sidewalk, a different network of streets. That's city types of services. In addition, you now have about $7 million of mitigation fees. In addition, we have, I think Mr. Fitzgerald has been very fair to the public in trying to address his impacts above and beyond mitigation. And with that, you saw in the PUD handbook, we offered to construct, this is not modular, this is stick-built, two classrooms. If for some reason, and you'll hear from the two gentlemen from the school district here later, I believe, that if for some reason there was zoning such that we could allow for our kids, and this thing went out, build out, had build out in the population forecast of kids, what is about 50 kids for elementary school was correct, he would build and dedicate to their standards the two classrooms. I mentioned, I mentioned the fire. Of course, we got the impact fees, whatever other fair mitigation. Oh, here's another one as well, and I wanted to make this, this is, I think, huge to this community, is the mule deer. I've heard from Sierra County taking action against this project, which is remarkable. It's not because, we could say they're selfish. I don't think they're being selfish. I think they're worried about wildlife migrating from Sierra County into this area. So let's deal with it responsibly. I have promised you that I've committed to Josh, our wildlife biologist, and to Mark. Those guys are experts in the field, that we will address wildlife mitigation. It's a mitigation wildlife WMP, as you see the, as it goes in the handbook. And that will probably result in some very large mitigation fees. But if we could all sit here and think with an open mind about the ability, you see how barren the site is now. There's nothing there, basically, other than the, there's two drainage ways that have some significant presence when you look at them to the naked eye. The one on the west and the one on the east. The other ones are really hard to discern as a major drainage way. They meet the criteria, so we need to respect it. But we're talking about restoration. We got 45% open space. Imagine part of the restoration in the developer, there's going to be a lot of negotiation with developer and NDOW, perhaps California Fish and Game and our wildlife team to restore the site so that you could have bitter brush and have sagebrush and have real habitat and deer interacting with this neighborhood. I think it's very important. It's a unique impact issue that we need to deal with on this property. So with that, I do have a note here, too. We heard in the community meetings, and even when I started as a planner, I used to think, you know, there was a little confusion about density and lot size. 394 is the cap. If he wants to do, if he could do and find a market for 4,000 square foot lots, what's the minimum in the PUD? He's going to run out of land because it's the end of the story. So I've said to you last time, and I promise you that that's where we're at still, he's trying to find different market segments at different prices. So you'd have smaller lots, medium lots, large lots, and have a successful neighborhood with a little support commercial is the idea. But there's a giant misconception, for all the good reasons, about lot size and quality, and it's a complete farce in the planning, design, and architectural world. 100% farce. You think about our most trophied neighborhood that I know of in the city area, going back to the Visual Preference Survey, and it's the Newlands neighborhood. They're down, I checked it. I have to check it to be able to sit here and represent it to you with some truth and conviction. It goes down to 3,600 square feet. Those are beautiful lots, beautiful community, because we have nice architecture, canopy of trees, and narrow streets. It's the way you really want to do design and influence community design, at least I do. But I'm just one tiny piece of the pie. So I touched on the market, the oversight, again, because of the complicated, I was looking at all the agency review, I think it's just worth mentioning about, you know, NDOT, Tomo, NDEP, City Arena, Washoe County, Army Corps will have their hands in this. NDOW, and, and, and very likely, we could have some cooperation with California Fish and Game because of that deer issue that's pretty sensitive. and Game because of that deer issue that's pretty sensitive. So with that, I will guard my 46 seconds remaining and be here for any questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Steph, and Nathan, before you get started, I would like to ask the planning commissioners, starting with Commissioner Reno, to, for new disclosures, please, or to re-disclose what you disclosed last meeting.
Okay. I visited the site, I met with the applicant and applicant representative, I met with representatives of the Verde Coalition, the Alliance. I've read the emails, in fact, I was just reading a few emails I hadn't seen right here during the break, and so I've read all the emails, and, yeah, that's it.
Commissioner Olivas?
I visited the site, I spoke with the applicant's representative, I spoke with some Verde citizens, and received a bunch of emails.
Thank you. Chair Wieski, as did I. Commissioner Kaufman?
As did I, I also met with the applicant's representative on a face-to-face conversation and with the Verde Coalition group.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site, I met with applicant's representative, and I received a lot of correspondence via email and letters, but I did not meet with applicant himself.
Very good, thank you. Nathan, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. As you know, this item was continued from the May 7 Planning Commission meeting, in order to give the applicant more time to provide additional information for the commission, which was submitted in your staff report and through the applicant's presentation. As you described, the proposal's been modified to reduce the residential units by 20% to a total of 394 units, and to restrict the commercial to four acres for the, for the standard commercial component, with the remaining six acres remaining for more rural type of commercial uses like nursery and landscape material yards. With those changes, the project is no longer a project of regional significance. I think what Mr. Kompadik forgot to bring up, he did distribute a memo to you with some additional modifications that he wanted to solicit to the commission. I'll go over them on his behalf. Staff has reviewed these and would support these changes, and should the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval. Specifically, they would restrict the total number of units in the entire area, including the commercial area, to 394. With the existing language, there would be an option to do certain types of residential units in the commercial with an approved special use permit. This, this modification would restrict the total number of units in the entire site area to 394. Secondly, there was updated traffic counts. The option for a hotel is also an option in the commercial component with an approved special use permit, and this modification would restrict that to 50 rooms. In addition, the developer has offered modifying the fencing standards to remove any option for wood fencing, to keep them either metal or concrete block, however it's described in that. Staff has reviewed this and can support that. Just to bring to your attention, we have various representatives. We have Mark Fries from the Nevada Department of Wildlife, Mike Boster and others from Washoe County School District, and myself, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer, available to answer your questions at the appropriate time. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Fire Chief Fernandez. Fire issues were, a big one at the last hearing, and we'd like to give our Fire Chief the opportunity to address the commission.
Thank you. Welcome, Chief Fernandez.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. Just by way of introduction, I'd like to just briefly touch on my experience that I can accurately and honestly speak to these issues. I'm entering my 33rd year in the professional fire service. I hold a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Texas A&amp;M. I'm a four-year credentialed executive fire officer from the National Fire Academy, from the United States Fire Administration, Certified Public Manager. While in Reno, I've had the distinct pleasure, and it was quite an experience to be the, the Fire Chief over the Collin Ranch Incident, the Washoe Fire Incident. I was also on the ground at the Reno Air Race Disaster, so large-scale incidents, large-scale management, large-scale mitigation is not completely unfamiliar to me. During my 33 years as a fire officer, about a dozen of those years have been held in the capacity of a chief officer, including fire chief, fire marshal, training chief, chief of operations. So I come to this commission with a wide breadth of experience, and I'd like to speak specifically the facts and issues that I have been made aware of regarding this project. I understand there is significant concern from the community, and I understand there was some miscommunication with respect to our response times, and I'm here to address those response times. I'd like to point out that response times are not issues or not facts that are etched in stone. They vary, they vary by time of day, they vary by weather conditions, they vary by actual location of the event itself that we're responding to. As an example, the Collin Fire, that particular fire originated approximately two miles off any paved road. So arriving to that particular incident would, you know, took considerable time, we could see it, but, you know, again, it impacted our response time. With respect to the project, I can, I can speak to how we would respond to that particular project, and at this time, we would respond utilizing the crew and equipment from Fire Station Number 11, which is on Mayan. I'd like to point out that we do have a closer fire station, which is in the Somerset area, however, that station is browned out. We do stand up that station during red flag and high-risk, high-hazard days. It is equipped, it is in an operational mode, however, it is not staffed unless we deem a specific threat to the community, either the specific community or the city as a whole. Most recently, we've had some red flag days, and we either stand up both Station 7 on Skyline or Station 19 in the Somerset area. What I'd like to do is speak to our response capabilities globally as a department, and then I'm going to drill down and speak to our response capabilities specific to this station that would serve this property, and I'll point out a couple of examples of how we have responded to that specific area that speaks to our ability to respond in a timely and efficient manner. These are statistics for the month of May of this, of this year, this is for the entire Our average response time to 100% of all calls during the month of May was 5 minutes and 46 seconds. Our typical time of arrival, from time of notification to the dispatch center to the time of arrival at the incident is 7 minutes and 19 seconds. We typically stay on scene on an average 20 minutes and 2 seconds. Specific to Station Number 11, which will serve this project, call processing time, this is something we have no control over, this is the amount of time that the 911 dispatcher receives a call and determines where it's located at and who should be responding. The average response time for the month of May was 2 minutes and 40 seconds. Our turnout time, this is the time that once the alarm is received at the station, we strive for a goal of 90 seconds, one minute, a minute and a half, is typically, or has been for Station 11, 1 minute and 43 seconds. Of all the calls for the month of May, we had an average response time of 7 minutes and 56 seconds. From the time the call was received at the 911 center to the time of arrival was 9 minutes and 10 seconds, and we typically stayed on scene anywhere from, well, approximately 21 minutes, 21 minutes and 50 seconds. I understand there was a report that was generated that stated our response times were between 6 and 8 minutes, and then there was a secondary report that spoke to 8 to 9 minutes. Upon hearing this, I actually personally drove, did two time trials myself, I did 1:00 in the afternoon. The first time trial, I literally started from the station, I drove down Sharlins to Rob Drive, and I entered I-80. I exited at the appropriate exit, went through the roundabout, and I went, there's a large barn on the property, and that was my, my mark to stop my time. Excluding turnout time, I made that in 6 minutes and 24 seconds. I took a second time trial about 20 minutes later, and instead of taking that route, I took a right immediately out of the station. I picked up Fourth Street, I ran Fourth Street out, picked up I-80, and exited at the appropriate exit, and it actually took longer, it was 6 minutes and 55 seconds. When you combine that with the turnout time, we are in the neighborhood of about 8 minutes and 30 seconds, almost 9 minutes. Our standard in the suburban area is 8 minutes at the 85 percentile. Given these response times, I feel that factually, the city of Reno can respond to incidents in this specific development in a timely manner that would meet any threat and risk that would be, you know, proposed or generated by these, the limited number of homes that are going to be, going to be constructed. I mentioned that we typically respond to the Boomtown Casino, that's almost due south as the crow flies from this development. I pulled up an incident, this is from October 24th, 24th, 2013, this was Thursday, this is at 1:00 in the afternoon, this is for a medical call. The engine company arrived at 6 minutes and 15 seconds. This is June 25th, 2014, this is also for a medical call, this is at 9:00 at night, the engine company arrived at 9 minutes and 3 seconds from time of alarm, and that includes turnout time. Fire Station 11, last year, calendar year 2013, responded to approximately 919 calls, of which 15 were fires. Fire Station Number 19 in Somerset responded to approximately 154 calls for service, of which one was a fire. The average response time for fire calls from Station Number 11 on Mayan, from time of notification, turnout, and response, and arrival is 7 minutes and 21 seconds. For medical calls, of which there were 676 in calendar year 2013, our average response time was 8 minutes and 4 seconds. It takes more than one engine to address an emergency such as a fire. We typically utilize what's called an effective response force. For the Reno Fire Department, our adopted standard is three engines, a ladder company, chief officer, and a safety officer. We can assemble that, in the urban area, we can assemble that in 10 minutes and 13 seconds at the 85 percentile. In the suburban area, we can do that in 15 minutes and 26 seconds at the 85 percentile. So factually speaking, with respect to servicing this proposed development, it is my professional opinion that it can be done. I can't speak to traffic issues, I can't speak to architectural design issues. Clearly, I understand there are some concerns from the community with respect to this project. With respect to our department servicing the anticipated call volume that this project would generate, which is about 35 calls a year, I can, I can comfortably say that we will be able to address, within acceptable time standards, any emergency that would originate from this project. I will also like to speak to the issue of the engine company. That engine company would be specifically assigned to Station Number 11. Should we get to a fiscal point where we can operate Station 19 in the Somerset area, it would be relocated to be closer to the development. And at some point in the immediate future, should we move forward in the development of a new station in the Verde area, which is in our long-term plan, that, that specific fire truck that we're asking the developer to contribute would be reassigned to that area. We do currently have the existing staffing to, to place on that apparatus once it is assigned to the, to the city. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Chief Hernandez. When we bring it back to the commission, we'll start with questions then. We have a little bit of public comment ahead of you. Nathan, do you have anything else you would like to add before I open public comment?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, I'm glad you asked. I did forget to bring up that I distributed a memo to you with the revised proposed motion, should you choose to move forward with the project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, if that's it for staff reports, I will open public comment, and I think what we will do is, we will, I have two different stacks here of, these are request to speak forms, there's approximately 50 of these. I have, these are, excuse me, I've got that backwards, there's approximately 50 who do not wish to speak forms, and I have approximately 30 who do wish to speak. Now, by state law, Commissioner Kaufman and I do have to read all of these and any comments that are written down into the meeting minutes, into this agenda item, and then we have 30-plus here who, all 30-plus of you in the public are going to be allowed 3 minutes each to speak, or up to 3 minutes. When your 3 minutes are up, you're going to be done speaking, because that's 150 minutes that we will be sitting here listening to you speak. If the person in front of you has already said what your thoughts are, please walk up to the microphone and say, "Thank you, but my thoughts have already been shared," and turn it over to the next person. Otherwise, this is going to be an extremely long evening, okay? But, no, sir, this is my time.
No, I'm going to talk, because I'm not going to take 3 minutes. Number one is, I don't believe you care about the livestock or the deer. I don't care, I don't think you care about nothing about that.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to have a seat or step outside and leave the building, please.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. You don't care about the deer having a attack, number one. Number two...
You're done.
That's good. Somebody had to step up.
Thank you.
You don't care about that. You don't care about nothing but your money.
Sir, will you please leave the chambers? That's it for applause also. Yes, sir, you, with a smile, thank you. Please, respectfully, I respect what you guys are here for, all of us commissioners do, and we want to hear what you have to say. We're going to give you your time. This is the way the system works, and I'm going to orchestrate it to the best of my ability. Thank you. With that, Commissioner Kaufman, if you've separated some of those, that's good, you take some, I'll take some, and we'll get started.
This is Julie Kirch, she's just in opposition.
Joanne Regan, city of Reno is, is in opposition. Comment is, "City of Reno master plan, open space and greenways, Verde School should be preserved as riparian habitat. Zone change, zone changes suggest protecting area."
Marcia Wally is in opposition, she's concerned about safety of wildlife and walking traffic, as well as bike safety, concerned about meeting needs of homes, starting at $450,000, meeting the needs of...
Okay, and before we go any further, if we butcher names, I apologize for Commissioner Kaufman and myself right now. Patrick McLaughlin is in opposition. "I'm opposed to the development of the Bull Ranch next to Verde, Nevada. I'm in favor of the original plan of no more than 160 homes."
Mark and Pam Scoot in opposition, in opposition of increasing the number of homes in this development.
John Bud Johnson is in opposition.
Susan Omo is in opposition.
Bill Lamson is in opposition. "I'm in, I'm in opposition to the proposed development. It should be left as open space."
Michelle Welsh is in opposition, I strongly oppose. "I strongly oppose."
Lindsey Triglia is in opposition.
Francis Walagora is in opposition.
Ron Triglia is in opposition.
Edward Campbell in opposition. "The current density is fine. The proposed high-density would put too much pressure on many services and on the highway."
John Price is in opposition.
Timothy Gru is in opposition.
Harley Anderson is in opposition.
Nancy Butler is in opposition.
Adam Zank is in opposition.
And I can't read this last name, but it's Christopher, uh, it looks like Cone, Conewall is in opposition.
Kristy Bess is in opposition. "I strongly oppose West Meadows Estates as planned."
Sarah Rosenfield in opposition.
Sherry McLeod in opposition.
Tessa Lachenko, I think, is in opposition.
Ken Wong is in opposition.
Taylor Landos is in opposition.
Nicole Appel is in opposition.
Glennadig Guardia is in opposition.
Jerry Baumann in opposition.
Ben Wise in opposition.
Matt Hamilton in opposition. "I'm not in favor."
Samuel Wise in opposition.
Emily Lyons in opposition. "I'm not in favor, as the sole reason we bought a home in Verdei is because of the open space."
Cody Kirsching in opposition.
Karen Bostian is in opposition. "Hope this won't be too much for traffic on Highway 40 Verdei if it goes through."
Kyle, uh, I think it's Kerr Rose is in opposition.
Tim Whaley in opposition.
Larry Dur is in opposition. "Why change the rules in the middle of the game? Keep Verdei open."
Joanne McGale in opposition.
Lanny Knapp is in opposition. "Keep Verdei as is. This is why we live there."
Carolyn Geiger in opposition. "The Verdei general plan was passed 10-plus years ago after many working hours and public input. The West Meadows Project should fall out..." Can't... "...and not make new zoning changes." I'm sorry, I left a couple of words out that I cannot read.
Tom and Cindy Maya in opposition. "Development proposed cannot be supported."
Susan Campow in opposition. "I have lived in Verdei for 22 years and am very concerned about the future of its community. We can choose to make Verdei a lovely community, or we can turn it into a poor-looking, overcrowded community with too many trailer courts and high-density homes. We are at a crossroad. Let's create a lovely Verdei. It is just along Highway 80 to Truckee."
Norma McMahon in opposition. "Area unable to sustain such a large development."
Lamar Sasse in opposition.
Cheryl Zoder in opposition. "Please do not approve this project. Verdei is one of the last few beautiful areas we have. Please don't approve 500 houses in this area."
Jeanette Bordeaux is in favor of. "Many households would love to live in this project. They are looking for homes in Verdei, and there is not much available. Also, I am in favor of suggesting a local builder."
Rose Devine is in opposition.
Douglas and Colleen Lundgren in opposition. "Development can't be supported."
Dennis Devine is in opposition.
Jan Apostol is in opposition. Okay, those are all of the requests-to-speak forums that I have for people who do not wish to speak. The next group is people who... I have one more here, from Peter Hubner, who is in oppos, opposition. "I like to give my time to Director Tim Beals, Sierra County." Mr. Hubner, I am not going to allow anyone to extend time to others. Everybody gets the same three minutes. Tim Beals, you're gonna be first. Call you to the podium. Following Tim is Rob Fitzgerald. Following Mr. Fitzgerald is Mike Boaster from Washoe County School District. Good evening. If you'll state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Tim Beals, B-E-A-L-S. I'm the county planning director, director of public works for Sierra County. I've been employed in that position for 41 years. Very familiar and certainly should be recognized as an expert in land use and what this proceeding provides you tonight. I'm always enjoying participating or observing another planning commission. Oftentimes, I take home something away from the meeting that I might be able to use in a, in a way in our own meetings. So, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and testifying in front of you. I want to thank the staff, the property owner, and certainly KLS Design, Mr. Kripotic, for their forthright provision of information and their openness in responding to our questions. You know, I, I ate at the Verdei Inn when it was a functioning inn. I ate at the Donner Trail Dinner House before it burned down. I went to Last Chance when it was really Last Chance. You know, I've, I visited Tom Treely's when he operated the hatchery out in Verdei. I had a number of great discussions with him. And I don't mean to paint myself as a dinosaur, but I want to convey to you what is the steadfast appearance and posture of this community as a rural community. Rural in nature, and it's a rural lifestyle. Solitude, horses, large lots, open space, no traffic, very little crime. It's a lifestyle. It's also a community that is governed by two different communities, two different states. We share a common boundary with the city of Reno and Washoe County with a land use plan that has dedicated itself in 15 to 20 years of time to an extremely rural lifestyle and land use plan. We're concerned now that we see the annexation of Reno and the appearance that the Reno densities may be traveling out to this community. It's a very significant concern to the county. The issue that I have before you today is a letter, and I provided one map that I think is very compelling, and I just want to, you can't see it, but it's in your letter that I provided today. Hopefully, all of you have a copy of the July 7th letter in front of you. But bottom line is, the county of Sierra has very significant concerns on wildlife, dispersed recreation, law enforcement, public service impacts, issues with the rural lifestyle, impacts to the children who attend schools in Washoe County that are there in Washoe County under inter-district attendance agreements between the two counties, and transportation and energy issues that are outlined in the letter. I think I'm gonna be losing my time. That's unfortunate, because I, I have a lot to say, but in respect for your timeframe, I'll, I'll end my conversation. Please consider the letter. Please consider Sierra County's opposition to this project. The county does not oppose the density that's allowed in the current master plan. It does oppose the proposed density of 400-plus lots, or 300 now that we've been, we've heard. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Fitzgerald, if you'd like to speak, if you'd like to add your term of concern. Go.
Could, could I wait? Can I hold it?
No, it's either now or...
Never?
No. I'll take that off.
Rob Fitzgerald.
And if you would, please, Mr. Fitzgerald, and everybody else who's going to speak, speak into the microphone, because this is the important thing.
Rob Fitzgerald, I'm one of the owners of the West Meadows Project. We took the time today to get some aerial photos of the project, so you get a better idea of what it looks like and what the neighborhood looks like. That is the River Oaks Project. The picture is taken from the south looking north. That is my property, just on the other side of River Oaks. The level area that you see there is the area where we will be building. The area that you see sloping up is the area that will be left in open space, including the ridge tops, which are very often level up there. Another perspective. Because I think sometimes there's a misconception about what the neighborhood is all about. It's not rural by any means. I have an industrial park due west. I have a trailer park southwest. I have River Oaks, which I might add is developed at approximately six units per acre, with very little, if any, open space. I have another trailer park to the east, southeast. There's an SF-6 parcel across from me. You can see it just to the right of River Oaks, although the county has bought it, and I think everybody hopes they'll turn that into a park, but who knows? Our project is being proposed at four units an acre, but understand, that four units an acre is a condensed area. The 100 acres, the 90-some-odd acres, I should say, that we're proposing for the residential development, has been condensed for the entire 200 acres, so that we could leave over 45% of the project in open space. The open space was aligned with what was perceived to be migratory corridor and possible wintering areas up on the upper portions of the property and ridge lines for the deer. I've never seen any evidence to the contrary. I lived there, and I've lived there for a number of years. I've never seen a herd of deer on my property. I've seen deer, please don't get me wrong, they do come through, and they some, tend to hang around my house more than anywhere. One of the things that hasn't been touched on to any great degree is, is some of the elements of the county's plan, even though we're not in the county any longer, and one of those was a diversity of housing. That's in the Verdei plan. They're looking for diversity. What they're looking for is a range of housing types. The proposal that I have on the table will allow that to happen. Furthermore, as it stands right now, there's not one available house for sale in River Oaks, which used to be an area people could come by and afford. Your average citizen, your doctor, not your doctors, but your, your firemen, your policemen, your teachers, your average working guy, your construction worker. The average price in what's left in Verdei right now for sale, and there is a few homes, I think there's 12 or 14 for sale, probably is around 800, 900,000 apiece. That's not diversity. If I develop this at 160 lots on the 100 acres that I perceive to be developable, you're talking 1.6 units per acre versus a neighborhood across from me at six. I think it for maximum, mind you, of four units an acre, that's reasonably compatible, plus the open space, the trailways that I'm adding, public, I might add, not just public, but maintained by me. This will be in addition to park mitigation fees that will be paid for the homes that I'll be building. I don't know that the neighborhood really understands or has been given proper information. I, maybe if they did, they'd still be here, but...
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Next is Mr. Boaster. After Mr. Boaster is Mark Fries. Following Mark will be Guy Borchard, or Borchard.
Good evening. For the, for the record, my name is Mike Boaster with the Washoe County School District. We just want to get on the record that we do have the new unit count of 394 units. The student counts for these, for these units, we are projecting at 96 new students for Verdei Elementary, 26 for Billingshurst Middle School, and 47 for McQueen High School. Those are the three schools that are zoned for this particular property. I want to outline a couple of things that have changed since we last talked and since we last started reviewing this project back in the fall. The first thing is, the GATE program, which is the Gifted and Talented Education Program, has since moved out of Verdei Elementary School, and that has freed up roughly two or three classrooms. The second thing is, our Board of Trustees wants to ensure that our mobile classrooms, which are in place at McQueen High School and several other schools throughout the district, are used as temporary measures rather than for permanent capacity of our schools. The temporary measure is how we've used, used mobiles for the last 20-plus years. We typically put a mobile in a, on a school site in anticipation of the next school being built. So, what's that, what that's done is, has shifted the primary impact of West Meadows from Verdei Elementary to McQueen. And at McQueen High School currently, we are 350 students over capacity. That, that school is built for 1,529 students. We have 1,876 students there currently. 350 of those are in those seven mobiles located at McQueen. And what this does, it overloads our cafeterias, our gyms, our computer labs, as well as hallways, common areas, and office space. McQueen unfortunately does not have additional room for mobiles. We already have seven on the, on the south, or actually the east parking lot. Verdei Elementary and Billingshurst will also go to near-capacity, even with the reduced unit count. The developer has met with us and has offered to mitigate the impact with two additional classrooms, which we do appreciate, but there's difficulty placing additional students at a school, and in this case, it would be McQueen, that is already over-capacity, already overburdened in the ancillary uses, not just the classrooms, but the, like I mentioned before, the cafeteria, the computer labs, that sort of thing. Our Board of Trustees is scheduled to begin discussions later this month to formulate a position on how the district can best handle increasing growth throughout the region. As of now, we can simply provide you with the information, with the facts. How many kids are there? How many we, we anticipate, and how many the classrooms can hold. With that, I have 30 seconds left. We also have our COO, our Chief Operating Officer, Pete Edgert here. If you have questions for either one of us later on, we're, we'll be available.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mark Fries, followed by Guy Borchard, and then followed by Susan Schimon. Mark?
Hi there. Excuse me. My name is Mark Fries. I work for Nevada Department of Wildlife. I'll just give a quick introduction overview of wildlife, and then if you have any other questions, I can address those at that time.
Thank you.
Just for a little bit on my background, I'm a habitat biologist. I cover 22 million acres in Nevada, primarily work with BLM and Forest Service through their permitting processes, so this is relatively new for me. I've been a resident in Washoe County for four years and been working for N-Dow for four years. So, there's others here probably who have a lot more information, historical information, but I'll do what I can. So, the Truckee Loyalton herd summers up in the Sierras, and then four, snow forces them down to lower elevations around Peavine, the Carson Range. It's extremely important winter range for these mule deer. If they don't have this area, they're not gonna persist. In 1985, there was about 5,000 mule deer in this herd. Now, there's about 1,400. This has been a lot of issues over several years. Encroachment from housing development, roads getting hit by trains, wildfires is a big issue, invasive weeds are big issues. These cumulatively have lowered the carrying capacity of mule deer to its current state. There is a 2010 Truckee Loyalton Interstate Mule Deer Herd Plan, which was written by Nevada Department of Wildlife and Cal Fish and Game. We jointly manage that herd to the best of our abilities. Just, we do have 23 GPS callers that have been out. See if I can do this. So, this, this shows kind of an overview. Sorry, it's a little difficult to see of... So this shows kind of an overview, sorry, it's a little difficult to see, of all the caller information. And the project site is in red. This is not on your packet, but I could provide this through Nathan and get it to you. The next picture shows, let me get that right side up, shows mule deer caller information, project site in the lower-left corner in pink. Now this primarily represents two mule deer collars, so out of the twenty-three collared animals, these are two collars. You can see one collared deer primarily occupied this area, another collared deer occupied this area. So we can't say there's at least one deer there. We can't tell you exactly how many deer there are there, but we assume that there's some portion, since we only have a small portion collared, that deer do occupy this. We do expect there to be impacts to mule deer, but we're hopeful that we could work with the developers, and they have reached out to us, to address the impacts through a mitigation plan, which will be minimizing and avoiding the impacts through the plan use, or the more detailed plan to come, as well as a mitigation plan which may consist of some off-site mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freese. And for the record, Mr. Freese, on his request to speak for him, put down that he is neutral. Guy Borchardt, next. Susan Schimon, and then Peter Hubner.
Thank you. Guy Borchardt, I've lived in Verdi for about twenty-seven years now. I think the, I'm going to make this really short and sweet. The main reason we're here is because we're looking to you people to be responsible. That is why we're here. We want a responsible community. It was approved already for a hundred and something homes, which is fine for that area. But we've got a special situation because we have Verdi, California, and we have Washoe County, Verdi, and now the city has come in on our end and trying to make a city out of little bitty town that's existed forever. So we want responsibility. That's what we're, why we're here. Thank you.
Thanks. Susan? Following Susan, Peter Hubner, and then Vernon Anderson.
Hi, I'm Susan Schimon. I'm a resident of River Oak, and I have two things I'd like to ask you to hold off on any decisions until you have facts and analysis on the actual impact on the traffic on Highway Forty. It's a two-lane road. As far as daily impacts, as far as safety, as far as just quality of life with traffic, and also in an emergency, with only one ingress and egress being that road. I'm like, I don't think a responsible decision can be made until you know that. The other thing is, I've heard a lot about the deer herd. It's a wildlife sanctuary out where we live, as far as birds and pollinators as well. Many of the birds live in the ground, in the bushes, and they will be hugely impacted, and they will be impacted to the degree of how many, what the density is. And it's already, there's already an impact planned for across the river, so this whole area, and it benefits all of Reno to have this wildlife sanctuary in formal, but it's there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Peter Hubner. Following Peter is Vernon Anderson, and then Janet Ravy.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, for giving me my three minutes back.
Yes, if you would speak into the microphone, please. If you need to move it, go ahead.
I am Peter Hubner. I am a Sierra County Supervisor in District Two, which includes Verdi, California. I was invited by the developer to a public meeting in Verdi, and after that, I attended about three or four more, and the public was not well-informed in the first two or three meetings. And then the more I talked to the residents, not only in California, also in Nevada, I became aware of how huge this development is. Hundred-and-fifty-nine homes is already big enough. And what you're doing, what you have the power to do, to leave it at that and not increase it, and during the meetings, all the concerns the citizens had, not just in California, also in Nevada, the county of Sierra put a letter to you, you received that, from July seventh, and we outlined the information we got from these meetings. And people are very, very concerned, and mainly the families, not just people who lived there for thirty or forty years already, no, also new family with children. And what I have heard, and believe me, I spent quite some time in Verdi. It's, you know, it's about an hour and a half away from my residence in Sierra County. Verdi is very precious on the California side and on the Nevada side. It's very precious. And I see advertisement on TV from Nevada, from the state of Nevada, that you are a state, that you are a park. So I urge you to listen to the citizens and do not increase this. Leave it the way it is so Verdi can stay the way it is today, and that's what the people want. So I represent the people on both sides, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Vernon Anderson, followed by Janet Ravy, and then Carly Borchardt.
My name is Vernon Anderson. I live in Verdi Sierra Pines, which is California. And I know some people don't think that those of us who live west of the Von Schmidt Line have any place here because we don't pay Nevada property taxes, we don't vote in Washoe County, and we should have no voice in this debate. I believe that's shortsighted and lazy logic. There are critical issues that affect residents on both sides of the state line: water, fire protection, traffic, wildlife, school capacity, air and water pollution, and the high price of suburban sprawl. I don't know how many of you remember the Crystal Fire, but those of us that lived through it will never forget it. It was August the fourth, nineteen-ninety-four, just a few weeks now, short of twenty years ago. It was a Thursday, and it was hot August nights. Firefighters came from all over Nevada and California. The Verdi volunteers were there. As flames and flying embers threatened our house, they asked if they could knock down our fence and set a backfire. We said yes. On lawns, roofs, and on porches, a hundred firemen saved our house that night, and every house on Pine Cone Drive. Not one of them asked where we voted or paid our taxes. The prospect of hundreds of additional houses with thousands more people in a little town with narrow roads, one-lane bridges, where fear of fire and drought are constant companions seems unwise, to say the least. But the get-rich-quick speculators just keep coming with their boom-and-bust schemes that have destroyed countless towns in both Nevada and California. It's not hard to remember the late Pete Seeger and his song, "Little Boxes." I'll promise not to sing it for you. But here's what he had to say. "Little boxes on the hillside. There's a pink one and a blue one, and a green one and a yellow one, and they're all made of ticky-tacky, and they all look just the same." He warned us, but we didn't listen. Are you listening now? Do the right thing, save Verdi, reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Ravy? After Carly Borchardt is going to be Minnie Savon, Seven? Please, welcome.
Chairman, honor commissioners, I didn't bring any AV stuff, but I thank City of Reno for bringing a picture of Verdi and hanging it on the wall over here. My name is Janet Ravy. I'm a fourteen-year Verdi Sierra County, California resident. I'm employed by the Town of Truckee. I am also on the Board of Directors for Susan G. Coman, Northern Nevada affiliate. I'm in front of you this evening to relate to you strong opposition to the proposed master plan amendment. I understand there's no statutory consideration for local regions that border and bleed into neighboring states. Let's face it, there's no reciprocity when it comes to Reno general government functions. As a Verdi Sierra County, California resident, I implore you to take the Sierra County, Verdi, California, and the City of Reno, Nevada relationship seriously. Please deliberate on both. The zoning that is proposed is incongruent to the findings of NRS 278A 510, A, quality of air and water resources, B, promotion of and conservation of open space, protection of natural and scenic resources from unreasonable impairment, and M, to ensure the protection of existing neighborhoods, communities, including the protection of rural neighborhoods. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your consideration. And one last thing, I'd like to commend you and share gratitude for Fred Turnier and Nathan Gilbert on their professionalism. As a public employee, I know how difficult some of these situations can be, and I'm sure you're proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carly Borchardt, followed by Minnie Savon, and then Michael Standar.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Carly Borchardt. I've lived in Verdi for twenty-seven years. I actually grew up in the community, and I would like to have a part in its responsible expansion. I would like to express very strong opposition to this master plan amendment as proposed. I appreciate and share the opinion that a tasteful development could be done on this site responsibly. However, the current zoning is absolutely sufficient. As this amendment is proposed, the density is a major issue. We worked, I have worked, very hard to educate myself and fellow residents of potential impacts this amendment proposes. In my review, consulting with professionals and obtaining concerns from additional residents, one specific point that I would like to bring up and have you guys address a little bit further for clarification would be the FEMA and flood zone regulations, as stated by a professional that I've spoken with recently, and I quote, "I have looked over the hydrology, and there is nothing about accumulative impacts to existing downstream residents. It addresses how they are going to avoid FEMA floodways in their own development. It addresses significant drainage issues that need to be addressed during storm events through the drainage ways by mentioning the excess will be collected through storm drains." The proposal does state that hydrological analysis would be done during a tentative map approval for the safety of the downstream residents, which, mind you, is right across the street. It is critical the developer perform the hydrology before this goes any further to determine if this project is going to be detrimental to the surrounding communities. The seriousness of this issue alone only generated one paragraph in the staff report. That's irresponsible. People's properties and lives will be affected. There will be several, there have already been several residents in River Oaks that have faced flooding issues in the past, and therefore we would specifically request that this be considered, and we obtain hydrological analysis before approving this amendment. Additionally, I would like to say, state that this specific issue speaks to findings 278A 510 F, I, J, and M. Lastly, since I have just a couple of seconds left, the argument that housing is needed in our area doesn't hold water for me. There's hundreds of homes, or lots for sale, right up the street at Somerset. There are several in our area for sale right now, and the eight-hundred to nine-hundred price range that Mr. Fitzgerald gave is not accurate. There is diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Minnie Seven. After Minnie is Michael Standar.
Okay, I believe that I'm Minnie Seven, and it's Mike Savon, and...
Well, excuse me for not being able to read it properly. I told you I'd mature a few, Mike, I apologize.
We're all getting older, but I am, I'm a retired Nevada Department of Wildlife biologist. I live in Verdi. My, my purpose for being here this evening is to say a word for wildlife, particularly for mule deer. All of you have been on the site. You know what it looks like. It was an old, it was an old dairy farm. All of the part of the dairy farm that was utilized, that was irrigated, today is just, just old brush. And if you, if you take a look at the west side of the property along the river, and you take a look at, you take a look at Peavine Mountain, Peavine Mountain has been ravaged through the years. There's a lot of people that would like to say they would like to fix that, they would like to do something for the winter habitat for the deer, but it's a very difficult thing to do. I, I just want all of you to know what is at stake here for, for the wildlife that are, that are existing on that ranch. Adjacent to the river, there's old winter habitat, sagebrush, bitter brush, sea anothis, choke cherry. And, and all of the deer that live on that mountain, when they come down the mountain, they're coming down to utilize that bitter brush. I know that I have talked to Mark Freese with the Department of Wildlife. I, I know how the process works. This is all going to be approved, there's going to be some mitigation fees that are generated. I just, I want all of you to know that there's a very important piece of natural habitat that is a part of that. And if, if I could display this, this shows, this shows the development that's being proposed. And on the, on the far left of the picture is the Truckee River. Some of the mitigation that's been talked about is to have a fifty-to-a-hundred-foot corridor that goes up along the river. That would allow for angler use, allow for people to go up through the public. And it's, it's difficult to see, but this, in the, in the largest parcel of the single-family development, you have sixty-nine-point-nine acres. And on the left-hand side of that, there's an area that's circled in red or orange, and that is the area that, that contains the historic deer wintering habitat. There's, there's nothing like it that's up the mountain. It's the most significant piece of, of deer cover and, and feeding habitat that's, that's available there. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael Standar? Clint Borchardt will be next, and then Gideon Kaplowitz?
Hi, my name is Michael Standar. I was born nineteen-seventy-eight at St. Mary's Hospital, and at that same year, my parents finished building their house on the California side of Verdi. My sister and I both attended Verdi Elementary School, and we both went on to get undergraduate and graduate degrees. I have a lot of, my Verdi classmates that are doctors, lawyers, engineers, fire captains, entrepreneurs, all working in Reno, and contributing to the advancement of our community. It's not an accident that myself, my sister, my classmates, all pursued higher education. I would say it's also not an accident that Verdi Elementary is ranked one of the top thirty schools in all of Nevada out of three-hundred-and-thirteen elementary schools. And it's also not an accident that Nevada is ranked dead last in a category of chance for success for students. And if Nevada plans to break the bad habit of ending up on last in education, we've got to be more proactive about our kids and about our kids' education. And, you know, I saw transcripts from an earlier meeting where, where the Washoe County School District said that they, they were not sure that, that the school could not currently handle what's being asked of it, and, which was, I think, reiterated tonight, and that, that were there funds for the additional teachers that might be needed, and that was not a part of it as well. The planning for this has been very reactive, I would say. You know, I don't think you get to come into our community and, you know, build a bunch of houses and make a bunch of money and say, well, deal with the kids, you know, throw you a bone, here's a, here's a one school, or a classroom that's not sufficient, and, and that'll take care of the kids. These are the actions that have led Nevada to be last in education, and something's got to change there. You know, before you vote on this amendment, you've got to think, is this a positive effect on Verdi Elementary? Has the proper research been done to understand what's going to happen to the school and the kids? And is there a solid plan in writing that protects the school, you know, from the negative effects of the development? And I can't answer yes to any of those questions. I can't recommend that, that this be passed based off, there's, there needs to be more done, understanding what's going to happen to Verdi Elementary School. You know, if, if we don't start caring about our, our, you know, our kids and the education before projects and money, we're going to keep ending up last on some of these, on some of these reports. You know, and we can be a part of the solution here and not part of the problem, and we've got plenty of modular facilities and, you know, there's, you know... got plenty of modular facilities and, you know, there's, you know, tie the two together about what's working and what's not, and do we need more modular facilities in Verdai and overcrowding, and it's just not going to work. You know, and I'd also like to say that, you know, as a, as a California kid on the Verdai side, I don't even know that if, if there were too many students, I might get forgotten pushed to another school, because I was on a variance to go to Verdai as it was. So, under this plan, would I have even been able to attend that school?
Thank you. Clint Borchard, followed by Gideon Kaplovitz, and then Stephanie McAfee.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Clint Borchard. My family and I have owned land in Verdai for 27 years now. I myself also went to Verdai Elementary School K through 6, went on throughout the school system to go to McQueen and eventually to UNR. Like Mike Standar just said, I too have seen my classmates go on to work for NASA, be entrepreneurs, and be leading pillars of this community right now. I'd like to clear it up a little bit, if it hasn't been clear, that the majority of us getting up in opposition to this amendment is specifically to the amendment. It is not to the development. We welcome landowners to do what they do with their property, which is develop it. What we are opposed to is the amendment to nearly double the amount of homes that's in this area. So, we don't feel that, we don't feel that the development is a bad thing. We want it done in a responsible and sustainable way, and we don't feel that this amendment is sustainable or responsible in any way for the list of reasons that you've heard and will continue to hear throughout the evening. Why I'm opposed to this development specifically is for the same reason as Mike, for the children of this community that are going to this school right now, and what the future holds as this proposed development ensues. So I was very fortunate to go to Verdai and have my teachers know my name, know my parents' name, and know exactly what I needed in order to further my education. With overcrowded classrooms, you're jeopardizing that, and you're jeopardizing the education of every children who goes to Verdai School right now and who will go there in the future. I was going to read a quote from Mike Boster, but I think he summed it up pretty well in saying that it's difficult to provide a succinct answer to the question of how to handle additional students. Classrooms are growing. There is no budget, no funding source for capital improvements, was his comment. So there are a lot of people who think that this amendment is a done deal and that there's nothing that we can do about it. We at the Verdai Coalition, as you've called it, we call it the Assistance League. We say otherwise. We've now organized, and we will get the proper lawyers, the proper professionals in place in order to resist this to our, to our dying breath. We've contacted the media, some of whom who showed up tonight, and every media attention that we've got has said, we will follow this and we will cover this story if it, either way, if it's approved. So, please look outside of the box of any of these statistical analysis that say that this development is a good thing, and make the correct decision to vote in opposition of this amendment to preserve the fabric of this community that's one of the last of its kind in this area, and to, most importantly, in my opinion, protect the rights of the local children to get a first-class education like I did.
Thank you. Mr. Gideon Kaplovitz, followed by Stephanie McAfee, followed by Bruce Comer.
Hi, thank you for getting my name right. I'm Gideon Kaplovitz. I'm the father of one of the youngest residents of Verdai, and if my wife gets her way sometime in the next year, I'll be the father of the youngest resident of Verdai. So I'd just like to thank everybody who spoke on behalf of the schools, because it's very dear to my heart. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed master plan and zoning map amendments. I fully support, like many of my neighbors, the guidelines currently specified for development for the property in the master plan and zoning map. My concerns are really borne out of our experiences of the last six years that I think have forced all of us, and you guys in particular on the Planning Commission, but everybody, particularly here in northern Nevada and Reno, to reconsider how we think about development and the approaches that we take for the resources that the city can provide, and our responsibility to ensure that our resources are allocated to support development in a long-term, sustainable fashion, and not exploited as they have been in this state and in this area for so long for short-term gain, at the potential for long-term consequences suffered by the masses. And we've all reeled from this. In fact, there's some degree of, you know, post-traumatic stress for this entire region about this issue. So I ask you as Commissioners, and even you as the property owner, you know, what's wrong with the current master plan as specified? It allows for the development, it allows for profit to be made, for, for, for everything that you would want for responsible growth. Are the proposed changes designed to solve a certain problem with the current maps? Are they designed to reduce the impact on our character of our community, on our general safety, our schools, protection from wildfire? I just note that last night, a helicopter was flying over my house at 10 o'clock with a fleet of fire trucks. It's quite traumatic for my young daughter and myself. Are they, are they designed to more seamlessly integrate with the existing infrastructure so as to draw upon natural resources in a more responsible and sustainable fashion? The answer is no, clearly, no. And just as a little example, in the PUD handbook, there's a description of a plan to run a connector to provide water to the site. And on the surface, this sounds great and thinking of foresight, oh, look at this planning. But the reality is that this connector that's in design stage is designed to provide water for 100, 150 to 200 houses. And the handbook itself acknowledges that great, a significant amount of upstream improvements would be, need to be made for the Tamwa Water System in order to provide for these increased houses. This punch-to-the-future approach extends for national, natural gas that has the same issue. So the whole thing, I think, speaks for itself and what we're all here for. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie McAfee, followed by Bruce Comer, followed by Rich Laverdy.
I'd like to thank the Commission for this opportunity to speak, and I'd like to speak in particular about wildfire safety in the area. I would also like to thank Chief Hernandez for clarifying some of the confusing and convoluted information we've had, we've gotten about response times. But I'd also like to take a closer look at those numbers. Chief Hernandez specified a response time of eight to nine minutes, not including dispatch. Now, that's great, except just last night, I was stuck at the traffic circle for several minutes behind a truck that could not navigate the roundabout. What happens if there's a fire and that happens again? Second, he noted an average May dispatch time of 2 minutes and 40 seconds. This makes the total response time between a fire being sighted and the first responders getting on scene, 11 to maybe 12 minutes. Now, Verdai is, has a long history of wildfires, and the Nevada Community Wildfire Risk Hazard Assessment Report put the area at high fire risk. In, under the right weather conditions, winds of 20 miles an hour and dry, which is pretty common in Verdai, and the right fuel conditions, fire spread in this area can be in excess of 100 acres an hour. Clearly, every minute of response time counts, not just for the people who live in, will live in the proposed development, but for the community across the street in River Oak and for wildlife habitat. This is, this problem is exacerbated by the fact that the only egress from this community and from River Oak is Highway 40. Now, the Forest Service notes that limited egress puts both residents and firefighters at risk in the event of a wildfire. Think about this, a fire potentially spreading at 16 acres a minute while almost 600 families, including the new development and all the families in River Oak, all try to get on Highway 40 and responders try to get to the scene. That seems like a nightmare in waiting. So, as you review this proposed planning amendment, I would like you to think about the potential, in fact, the documented potential for significant wildfire in Verdai, and what this means if you double the population of the community and still only have one road out. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Comer, followed by Rich Laverdy, and then Amy Garham, I believe it is, Garhan.
I'm Bruce Comer. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for River Oak Homeowners Association. I thank you, Commissioners, for giving me a minute to speak. I can't speak as eloquently as everyone has before, just I want to reiterate that I am against the proposed amendment. The original plan is okay by me. I do have one question. If we can see this, maybe it was already answered and I overlooked it, but in, under paragraph E, the water usage is X-ed out. Is there a figure that goes in there? That's my question for you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get you an answer for that one. Rich, you're next, and then Amy. Following Amy is Julianne Zoder.
Commissioners, my name is Rich Laverdy, and I've been a resident of Verdai for the past nine years. I've taken an active role in community affairs as I am the most recent and past chairman of the now-defunct Verdai Citizens Advisory Board. I am an architect, contractor, and have managed development entitlements. I'm in favor of property rights, especially the right to develop one's property. Most of the development projects that I have been involved with ended up being approved as zoned or downzoned. What I see with the West Meadows Project is a complete disregard for the years that the community spent in participating in the effort to zone this property to respect the values of the Verdai community. The developer of this property is using an age-old ploy. Hire a planner, determine the maximum density the property can withstand, create all the backup maps and reports, and file an amendment with the city, knowing full well that the community will raise up against such a proposed project. Then what the developer does after several hearings and community meetings, the developer makes the magnanimous gesture of reducing the project by 100 units. Wow, now he's the good guy, but he is still asking for an overload of doubling the existing zoning. Developers would perform, would normally perform their due diligence before acquiring a property such as this, and consequently, I would venture to say that, that the performer would, would, I missed a page, sorry. That the performer would work for the existing zoning. So again, why do we need to double the existing zoning? As one reads through all the reports and responses, there are several serious impacts that seem to slide under the radar. The term minor insignificant has been assigned to certain impacts to bring the project a hair under a project of regional significance. Tamwa can only presently, presently provide water for 150 to 200 without major improvements in a drought year. Verdai Elementary School will be impacted. Final map at 250 units, a $650,000 fire engine needs to be purchased. What if there are no funds? Natural gas line has a capacity for only 200 homes. Cable capacity is, is low. In summary, the developer states to Nathan Gilbert on June 11th, 2014, "We have proposed a major concession at this point to reduce the residential density to four dwelling units per acre." So the maximum number of lots is now 394. Hold on. Who is making a major concession? I think they got it wrong. They, the developers, are asking you, the Planning Commission, and the citizens of Verdai to make a major concession in approving the amendment. I ask you in closing, what's wrong with the present zoning, which can allow all kinds of creative planning? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amy. After Amy, Amy is Julianne Zoder, and then Mike Garola.
Hi, my name is Amy Garahan, and I'm a homeowner in Verdai, and I oppose the amendment. One of the main reasons my husband and I bought a house in Verdai was to live in a place where we could start a family that had lots of open space, a small school, lots of wildlife. So I am definitely concerned about the school issue. I don't feel that the school could take the increase of size and still have the quality of education that the Verdai Elementary School currently has. I'm also concerned about the, as the development's going on, but after the development is finished, in terms of water runoff, how that would affect the Truckee River with chemicals and whatnot, since the Truckee River is so close, and that is a very large increase of homes and runoff that could end up in the river. I'm also concerned with the water issues. The majority of the people I know who live in Verdai are on wells, and so I'm interested to know more about how 400 homes would have enough water to be sustainable. Also, when you live in Verdai, you're very familiar with the wildlife there, and you're very careful with your driving. With 400 homes, that'd be approximately 800 more drivers, and there are very frequently deer on that highway, and most of us know to drive slow and to watch out for it, and I, I feel that a lot more deer would be killed by drivers with that increase of population. And I'm also a frequent biker to my workplace, and I bike along Highway 40, and I would probably feel not as, definitely not as safe biking with that increase of population and the increase of traffic on that road in the morning with people, you know, possibly trying to pass each other with that much traffic. People already drive really fast on that road, and there's obviously a lot of bikers, and bike safety is something that's very important in the Verdai community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julianne Zoder. Mike Garola will follow her, and then Dennis Bennett.
Hi there. My name is Julianne Zoder. I don't have a speech prepared like others have, and they've spoken really well, but I'd like to say that I too have grown up in Verdai. I went through Verdai Elementary School, Billy and Hurston, McQueen, and I went on to UNR to become an environmental engineer. So I'm vested in both personal feeling for Verdai and also an environmental outlook on things. And we've had a lot of talk about deer lately, and deer are certainly a concern, but they're not the only animal out there. Someone mentioned the birds that do live in that field and would be severely impacted by houses. But another thing I'd like to bring up and remind people, I know the kids who went to Verdai probably remember recess would be closed for bear or mountain lion safety. We've had mountain lions on the playground. My parents have had bears in their garage. These are things that I think maybe we haven't thought about with the 400 new homes, 800 or 1,600 people being more exposed to such wildlife, so much more wildlife coming down because of Somerset, which I don't approve of either, but that's already been done. So I just wanted to bring up that safety hazard. Also, water is a big concern for me. They mentioned that they'd be getting water from Tamwa, which I know for a fact cannot handle another 400 homes. As it stands now, they have room for expansion, but that's lots of money. And of course, I have very, very strong feelings for Verdai School as a personal alumnus, and would love to see it stay as a small school with the teachers that are there and care for each individual kid. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, Garola, followed by Dennis Bennett, and then Mickey Skinner. Mike, are you still here? Hearing and seeing no Mike, I will move on.
Mike Garcia, by any chance?
Yeah, what's your address?
110 River Edge.
That's you. Really, I'm doing pretty good.
Nevada's a Spanish word, in silver. Hi, my name's Mike Garcia. I'm selfish. I came here because I'm selfish, and I'm, I'm going to admit it to you. And I didn't even know if this was the right place to come, but I was reading the General Zoning Plan Amendments, and F says to protect the life and property of the people and other from fire and water and from fire and water and other natural disasters. I don't expect you guys to remember everything you work under, but, I mean, they're there to help us, so I, here's my problem. I've been here long enough to remember the earthquakes. I'm sure if you've been here a couple of years, you remember the earthquakes too. They lasted two weeks. There were clusters. I got a crack in my wall. The Somerset properties lost walls, they came down. Those were only three magnitude. Magnitude four is 10 times greater. Now during that three magnitude, there's a place on Highway 40, which if you visited the property, you probably passed, with a river on one side and a giant shale cliff on the other side. The shale cliff's covered with a chain-link fence. And twice since I've been here, those rocks have stopped the traffic on the road, once from the earthquakes and once from a lady truck driver who decided to make a U-turn there and couldn't make it. And I worry about that. And I tried to look up a county or city master plan for bad things happening, disasters. I couldn't find one. The last builder of this property across the street had a clay-impacted area that was west of the farmhouse that was supposed to be dug out because they figured it would shift if there was water underneath, or if there was an earthquake, it would liquefy. When I used to watch that being done, he was just bringing in trucks. It wasn't the present guy. Personally, I liked the pleasant, this guy's plan for the whole area. I think it's good. But what I worry about is that particular part of the, the road, where if there is an earthquake, that hill's going to come down and the river's on the other side. Or, as I've seen twice since I've been there, river coming up on the road in front of my house and maybe washing that section of the road out. And if there's an earthquake, there's going to be fires. That just comes with it. I lived through the fire in San Francisco and the big earthquake when the freeway fell down, and also the one in Felton. I've been lucky that way with earthquakes, so they scare me. So I want you to consider, Kathleen, Douglas, Kevin, Paul, Charles, you going to be the guys that say, "We let those people die because the bridge went down on one side and the road got closed on the other?" And personally, it's just because there's going to be a lot more people, it's going to be harder for me to get out. Thank you for listening. And you should be paid a lot more.
Dennis Bennett, followed by Mickey Skinner, and then Jim Orr.
My name is Dennis Bennett, and I am a homeowner in Verdi, Nevada. I was asked tonight to read a letter of opposition by my neighbor Frank Pepe, who was unable to attend. However, I feel both his and my opposition concerns have been addressed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mickey Skinner, followed by Jim Orr, followed by Michelle Powers.
Hi, my name is Mickey Skinner. I'm a five-year Verdi resident. I'd first like to take this opportunity to apologize specifically to Douglas Kaufman, who is running the last meeting. I'm sorry I went over my time. I'm sorry we got really excited. Since then, we've organized, well, we found out more about what you're legally obligated to do and how the process works, so we're going to try to make this as speedy as possible. Next, I would like to address the comments of the attorney for this project. How condescending can you be to call the residents of your neighboring state selfish because they came to Reno to plead for your help? How condescending can you be to say that there are a lot of misunderstandings when clearly we've organized hundreds of people? We've studied the nomenclature. We have all kinds of different, specific issues with this particular project. There's no misunderstanding, please. We understand very well what 600 or 500 or 300 homes means to Verdi. We want the zoning to stay the way that it is. We all believe in the zoning as it currently stands. I'm a contractor myself. I've worked on million-dollar homes in Beverly Hills. I'm from Los Angeles, and I moved here because I don't want to live in LA. I want to live in a beautiful place with lots of nature. When this happened on the edge of Los Angeles, what we did was we incorporated, and we started suing the city. So if that's what you guys want from us, I don't see what other choice we have other than to try to do something like that to stop this type of project. It's not that we're uninformed. It's not that we misunderstand. PUD just recently requested that Reno reduce our water usage by 10%. Here's your 10% right here. I'd also like to say that we presented you with a bunch of signatures from hundreds of people all over the Reno area. These were not just constituents from the Verdi area. These were constituents from all over Reno who appreciate Verdi spaces. These were bikers who, from downtown area, who come out to Verdi specifically to bike in Verdi. These were people from the Great Basin Community Co-op. These were people from the River School. These were people from all over the Reno metropolitan area who really want you guys to focus on fixing the inner city and not allow this much development as long as the city looks the way it does. There are four buildings in this general within 40 steps that need to be redeveloped, four buildings. There are four foreclosed properties in Somerset in the commercial area alone. That's not talking the foreclosed homes in the Somerset area. There are four to 10 open commercial spaces on Man and Rob Drive. That's plenty of commercial space. The current Verdi plan is requesting that we do not expand commercial space except in downtown Verdi. We're asking you guys to respect that. I do respect you guys, and I appreciate what you're doing here, and I understand what you have to do. And I want you to listen to us because we are your constituents and we do respect you, so show us the same respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jim Orr, followed by Michelle Powers, and then Cindy Lexer.
It's been a long evening. Thanks for this time.
Can I get you to speak into the microphone, please?
Yep.
So I can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Jim Orr, and I'll read my statement with your permission. Kinder Morgan Corporation operates a pipeline in the development area. It transports volatile fuels from California to Reno. Officials indicate the pipeline is located anywhere from 1/4 mile to 1/2 mile north of Highway 40. A company official informed me the property owner believes the pipeline is actually located 1,000 feet beyond the northernmost limits of the development. This information clearly exhibits confusion regarding its exact location. The inferred depth of the pipeline is from four to six feet. Assessments are done every five years. Due to company red tape, I was unable to ascertain when it was last assessed. However, no safeguards are in effect should it be breached. Fuels in the pipeline obviously contains dangerous materials. Any breach could spark an explosion, possibly affecting the River Oak subdivision, other homes and businesses in the area, trailer parks, and the United States Post Office in Verdi. Such an explosion and fire could extend both east and west along the pipeline. In addition, strong westerly winds in Verdi are prevalent. A breach and explosion would result in a toxic cloud that could travel westward over the adjacent Del Webb and Somerset subdivisions, Mogul, and some parts of Reno, resulting in significant health and environmental issues. Grade on the property diminishes north to south with many culverts. Truckee River is very near Highway 40. Any breach could cause leaking fuel sending into the river affecting its fishery and ecological balance. A significant cleanup expense would result. Further, unless alternative water supplies to the River Oak subdivision will be adopted at the onset of the development, 172 homes will continue to receive water from wells located on the property. Any toxic leaks into these wells during construction would dramatically affect the supply. To close, we're all familiar with accidents involving breach of fuel pipelines, many resulting in the loss of property and lives, notwithstanding environmental damage and long-term health effects. A development in an area posing the possibility of such an accident is both ill-advised and inappropriate. The Commission should seriously consider the aforementioned factors and disapprove this project for the safety and well-being of local citizens and to maintain the established wildlife habitat and environmental stability in the area. At the least, due to the confusion regarding the pipeline's exact location, a complete and thorough study should be implemented to ascertain its location, plus any additional potential hazards should it be breached. This information should be provided to all parties, both for and against the project. The aforementioned pipeline information can be verified by contacting Kinder Morgan representative Steve Osborne in California at 707-249-1633, and Jared Jones locally at 775-745-4141. Thank you for this, your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Powers, followed by Cindy Lehr, followed by Viann Fiedrich.
Thank you, Commissioners. Michelle Powers, I'm a Verdi resident of 12 years. I come on behalf of you as a mother of a year old as of this Saturday, so you hold his future in your hands. I come by half speaking upon the safety and general welfare of our, us residents. Reno-Toho Odyssey, we are a major part of that running course. That is a course that has been run for 10 years, and the 2015 will be its 11th year. The safety and the traffic of 6,000 new cars running old US 40 cannot handle that, and that damages the run and whether or not the safety of those runners. Also, the 200 bikers that we have a day on US 40. US 40 cannot handle that many people going in and out. It damages our safety. And my husband is in law enforcement of 14 years, and our son is our number-one priority, and we speak upon the crime, increase of crime. Nobody has looked upon that, but you're talking 800-plus residents, and that increases a crime, bringing, bringing people out there to party out there, out on Dog Valley Road, or... I want my son to play on the streets and have fun. I grew up in a small town, and that's our dream, is my son riding his bike on the streets. And if this goes through, it ain't going to happen. We're going to have to move, and you're damaging our livelihood and my son's. Also, I'd like to speak upon River Oak. We have 172 homes, and yes, we are zoned for six units per acre, whatever the developer says. You know what? 172 is appropriate, not 394. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Lehr, followed by Viann Fiedrich, followed by Shelley Wilson.
Well, the best part about going last is most of the issues have been covered.
For the record, would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm Cindy Lehr, and I just moved into the subdivision a year ago, River Oak. So some of the issues I just wanted to ask about was, Fire Department's already in a battle with the city for manning for Fire Department. It's a great concession to get the truck, but if you don't have the manpower, that's going to be a problem. And along that line is they are hammering out negotiations on the backs of the Police Department. So the Police Department isn't going to be doing much hiring in the future because of this. So our calls for service are going to be based on manpower, and that affects everybody. The extra minute for the, or two for the fire response, it's only an issue if you're the one who's dying. Those two minutes could mean the world. School resources were already handled by the school district, and that covered my issues, that it's just not too, about two classrooms. Domestic water usage, how is going to Tamwah going to, we're in a drought, we're going to be in a drought for a long time, we're always in a drought. How is that going to affect water usage, not only just with the residential and the commercial, but all the natural landscaping? To make it look nice, it needs water, and that's a big issue. And along with the proposed garson, tentative garson project, that's going to impact the water issues and all the rest of the issues also, because you're adding hundreds of more homes there. One thing I had a question on was the power utility corridor starts. Power lines come here on the edge of the property and go down the highway.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, cut across, clipping the corner of the River Oak subdivision. That's supposed to be mitigated because of easements. My question is, how is that going to be mitigated on the single-family side? How is that going to affect the rest of the subdivision? And last, as seen in Somerset and Del Webb, not all the builders complete their jobs. And they have Somerset builder, when they took off and went bankrupt, left the city with a lot of concessions that weren't handled, like unpaved roads. I'd just like to make sure that the, the concessions that are being made by the builder are honored, and perhaps baby steps are the best way to go, and when he wows everybody and can make everybody shut up because it's an awesome subdivision, then go ahead and think about amendments or added buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Viann. Following Viann is Shelley Wilson, and following Shelley, I'll announce this name in a minute.
Thank you for hearing me this evening. My name is Viann Fiedrich. I was going to ask the council here to take a head count of all of the people who took their time to come up, come out to this meeting tonight, but it looks like about 50% of the people have left, and I'm sure not all people wrote their name on a piece of paper saying that they opposed this amendment. And so, but I, I would still like you to take a count to see how many came here in opposition. One thing that I have, two things I have a comment on. The planner and the owner, Mr. Fitzgerald, said that we of the community were confused, that we simply didn't understand what our community looked like. They even brought pictures so we could see what our community looked like. Wow, I'm impressed. My husband and I bought our property 40 years ago. I'm quite familiar with my community. I think all the people here are familiar with their community. About a month ago, we had a local meeting in which the planner and the developer-owner came, and representatives from the Sierra County, and the firemen, and the, well, the plant, I'll get confused. Anyway, I personally asked Mr. Fitzgerald at that time why he wanted to double the density on this property. Why do you, Mr. Fitzgerald, want to double the density?
Ham, is that...
And he said, his answer was directly to me, directly from him, "Because I can't make enough money with only 198 as currently zoned." Thank you for hearing me. Good evening.
Thank you. Shelley Wilson, followed by Travis King, followed by Mallory King.
Hello, my name is Shelley Wilson. I've lived in Verdi for over 20 years. I'm not confused. I vote at all times, and I'm adamantly against the increase in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Travis King, lives on Laguna Way. Going, going, gone. He is in opposition to it. No Mallory, okay? Mallory did write a comment, and I will read it in to the record. Mallory is in opposition. "There's no need to pour money into this new building. Why aren't we spending money to rejuvenate the abandoned poor ones that already exist?" Next is Evan Burford. Okay, in opposition. "I just have one question. Why waste more money, destroy more of this beautiful state? Why don't we put this money towards fixing problems which need to be solved instead of creating more problems?" Jean Gard...
Gardella.
Gardella, thank you for the help. You're up, sir. Followed by Susan Kramer, followed by Sally Brinkerhoff.
My name is Jean Gardella. I'm a former chairman of the Verdi Advisory Board, now defunct, which is very unfortunate. I was a member of the Verdi Advisory Board when the substantial PUD was proposed about 10 years ago, 10 or 12 years ago, in which the whole area was planned. Five properties came together and 3,000 houses proposed. The developer came in, plopped one copy of the planned unit development in the hands of our chairman and asked us to approve it, and needless to say, we weren't about to do that. We had no opportunity to review it. We, a lot of people objected to the thing. Bonnie Weber, who was our county commissioner at the time, suggested that the developer meet with the community and see if they couldn't... meet with the community and see if they couldn't resolve some of the issues having to do with that. It seems that this person did have a meeting. I didn't, wasn't aware of it, didn't, wasn't invited, didn't, didn't have an opportunity to participate. What I can tell you is that the developer did host a meeting at Boomtown. It lasted until well after 11:30 at night, and was, came to, it was obvious that there was more input from the community. When these developers come to town and wanna increase the develop, the densities and whatnot, they, they want to, they've purchased a property with a certain value and a certain zoning density, and they're coming and ask you to increase the density so that they can have a greater return on their investment. Well, I think that it's your responsibility to say, what is the offset to that increased value that you're giving? And it has to be, how does it affect the community? How does it affect the infrastructure? Are they responding to the needs of the, of the, of the community and the impacts that they're going to bring? And I think in this case, that's not the case. I'm gonna use the rest of my time to just say, for example, on roads, there's 500-house development north of this, there's no indication about the road structure coming through this property, there's no discussion about on ramps, off ramp, or not on ramps, but acceleration, deceleration lanes. I think there should be an accommodation for a potential roundabout, which might be an appropriate solution. The fire response team, the times that the fire chief gave, I measured myself, and I found them to be a little bit different, but there's a problem in that most of those distances are over five miles from this location, and that's gonna mean that the insurance premiums on those homes are gonna be substantially higher because it's based on the mileage, not the time. I have concerns about water. There were three wells drilled on this property. None of them had the water. Tom Waugh did a test just south of the cliff, they did a test well. I'm assuming that's where the water will come from for the 150 homes. What happens when they don't have the opportunity to, to continue to do the other 300 homes or 200 homes? Because the water resource is gonna be down on Mayberry Drain.
Thank you.
What's gonna happen?
Susan Kramer, Sally Brinkerhoff to follow, and then Ernie Camilleri.
Thank you. My name is Susan Kramer. I live in Verdi, and I'm a retired Washoe County schoolteacher. And most of my concerns have been addressed through the alumni from Verdi Elementary, as well as the school district official. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sally Brinkerhoff. Ernie Camilleri will follow, and then Leif Anderson.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sally Brinkerhoff, and I am a resident of River Oak in Verdi. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns. My biggest issue is about density of this project. We've heard from a lot of people tonight about, a lot of really good information from knowledgeable people, and the one thing is, I'd like to address specifically comments from the planner and the developer. One, you know, we saw Mr. Fitzgerald's photos of the area with a, beautiful photos with an extremely skewed perspective, showing the River Oak development to be this huge thing, that it's 172 homes, and his property to be this, this little thing on the edge of it. And I just, it was just an extremely skewed perspective. The River Oak property is low density, and they're using that as a precedent. However, it's low density because it used to be a mobile home park, and now it's single-family homes, so we've actually, being single-family homes has actually lowered the density, where maybe there would be three mobile homes, where there is a home now. So we didn't increase any density like they're asking to do on this property. Also, the planner, Mr. Kimpatic, I'm sorry if I said your name wrong, but he said, you know, that there's a big misconception, misconception, and that no one really gets it 'cause it's a complicated bag of stuff. And I guess it is, zoning is a complicated bag of stuff, but that's just because I think this project's still a moving target. You know, there's four acres to six acres to maybe 10 acres of commercial, that states in the staff report. Actually, it says the commercial area is four acres, but may be expanded to six at a maximum of 10. So it's, it's, this project's a moving target. We don't have a misconception, we just want some actual figures. And it's, it's also known that Washoe County is in strong opposition of this commercial area anyway. I also have a question, another, sorry, I'm getting so confused, it's very scary up here.
Go ahead. Take a deep breath, you're all right.
So, anyway, the, the commercial area, there's also says in the staff report that maybe they're gonna use it for 21 dwellings per acre. So is it commercial? Is it residential? Is it, I mean, how many houses are actually gonna be on this property? And then also, you know, saying that the Mortenson property is SF6, and actually, it's, the Mortenson property to the northeast of West Meadows is actually a lower density. It's 217.1 net developable, developable acres at SF6, that's, that'll yield about 666 units or three units per net developable acre. However, this is spread out over 1,000 gross developable, developable acres, or .67 units per gross acres. What West Meadows is proposing is three to four times that density. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ernie, you're next, followed by Leif Anderson, followed by Samet Morelli.
Good evening. Apologize for my appearance. I just came down from camping at Lake Almanor to be here tonight. Just last week, I retired from the Reno Fire Department after 30 years as a captain, the last 12 or so as a captain, or maybe more, I'm not sure. In the last three years, I happened to be assigned at Station 11, which is the first responding unit that will come into the proposed development site, as Chief Hernandez mentioned. And I'm kinda uniquely qualified because prior to coming to Reno in 1984, I worked as a wildlife biologist with the US Forest Service for eight years. And I've lived in Verdi for 27 years, built my home about the same time that Guy Borchardt built his, in the Sunrise Creek subdivision, of which, to build a house, you had to have at least one acre of land, because you're on your own septic tank and well. And what we really loved about the area was that it is a natural setting, and our home is located right along Dog Valley Road. And I told my wife, "Well, I don't wanna damage one Bidderbrush plant when we put our house in, if we're able." As it turned out, we had to damage just one. But as soon as we put a berm along Dog Valley Road, the deer immediately moved in to start using our lot. And they typically bed down there quite a bit. So the deer utilize the subdivision along Sunrise Creek. Do you guys know what I'm talking about when I say Sunrise Creek? That's just on the north side of the, or the west side of Truckee, across the bridge, that subdivision near the cemetery. So, coming back to the project, we've, you've heard a lot today, and from a fire standpoint, of which I can speak, 'cause I'm a former fire behavior analyst. I was a situation unit leader on the Crystal Peak Fire that was referred to, that occurred in Verdi 20 years ago, and two weeks later, when the fire in Loyaltown, which was 78,000 acres, I was the fire behavior analyst on that fire. Verdi sits in a, in what we call, in fire behavior terms, a thermal belt. It is, it's the mid-elevational zone in a plant community, and that plant community has the lowest average relative humidity, therefore the driest average fuel. So fire is a part of that area, and it'll continue to be. So when you're looking at a subdivision going in of this size, and you have heard many people talk about access for egress for emergency vehicles, or leaving by emergency, people are trying to evacuate the area, that is a real serious concern. As a matter of fact, there was another little subdivision that was approved along the Truckee River that is on my side, that I was concerned about a possible evacuation zone, but it was approved for townhouses. So there's a lot of areas that may look undeveloped out there that have already had approval for construction. So you need to look at that. From a wildlife standpoint, there's bobcats that use that river frontage right along the edge there, besides all the deer and the other biologists that have spoken to you. And the interstate deer herd, I just saw last year, a herd of 400 animals moving from Peavine across the backside.
Thank you, Ernie. Time's up. Leif Anderson, you're next, followed by Samet Morelli, followed by Katie Ogden.
Greetings, commissioners. I'm Leif Anderson. I wanted to-
Can I get you to speak into the microphone, please? Thank you, sir.
There we go. Greetings, I'm Leif Anderson. I wanted to bring up the issue of quality of life that we have out in Verdi. One thing that hasn't been brought up is lighting. We enjoy the dark skies. We can see stars, actually see stars, which is quite, quite amazing. And come out some night and take a look. It's quite fantastic. Other issues has been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm the other half of Leif, and yes, we not only see-
For the record, would you state your name, please?
Samet Morelli.
Thank you.
We not only see stars, we see beautiful, beautiful, not only deer, wildlife. You can smell the air. I'm sorry. It gets me. This is my dream home. This is my dream place. This is where we wanted to end up. This is what we love. So please consider our quality of life. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Ogden. Most of my concerns have been addressed today. The only thing that I would like to maybe bring to attention, and I don't know if it's relevant to your guys' decision today, but it seems like there's a lot of, I think it was called the Reno Master Plan, and there seems to be a lot of planning already going on that will affect schools. Part of it was Mortenson. There's a Fourth Street development, but I just wanted to bring to attention that there's more planning going on, not just the Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That is all I have for-
Do we clap now?
Not yet. Wait a minute. Hold on. Actually, go ahead. Everybody clap. For the chairman. Thank you. That round of applause is for you guys for doing a great job and making my job easy so far. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else here this evening who has not filled out an orange request to speak card, who I have not called up, who would like three minutes to share your opinion or your thoughts? If so, please come forward to the microphone and state your name, and when you get done, come right over here to my right, to the secretary's area. There's orange cards and pens. You fill out your name and a request to speak form. Thank you. Go ahead, whoever, yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Nicola Pell. I'm a resident of Verdi. The Reno Housing Plan, page 11, Policy 6.2. New development should encourage pedestrian, bicycle, and transit access to facilitate the reduction of automobile use. The current plan has no accommodations for transit access to the West Meadows Estates development. In fact, the development will do the exact opposite of Policy 6.2 of the Reno Housing Plan and increase automobile use in our area by three times the current rate, creating traffic congestion at the roundabout coming into and out of Verdi, through Old Highway 40, a two-lane highway, and most significantly and dangerously, at Verdi Elementary School on Bridge Street, where there is already a shortage of parking spaces and safe drop-off zones, with cars parked on both sides of Bridge Street during school drop-off and pickup and school events, all while residents coming down from Dog Valley Road are trying to get in and out of Verdi. There are no accommodations currently proposed in the West Meadows Estates development to prevent or manage this congestion nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you, wait a minute, wait a minute. Right over this way, you gotta fill out the orange card for me. Yes, sir, that, you're next, that, filling out an orange form. You can finish it up after you give your three minutes.
Hi, my name is Howard Rosamond. I'm not a resident of Verdi, but I would like to be. And a project like this, I think, would be very beneficial for somebody like myself. I'm almost a lifetime resident of Truckee, and I sold my place up there about two and a half years ago, and been looking for two and a half years in the Verdi area. I even have a P.O. box in Verdi, anticipating someday something like this will come along. So I'd very much like to see it go in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like we have one more. If you'll state your name for the record, please, and then fill out your orange sheet.
Thank you. Sarah Rosenfeld is my name. I'm a resident of Verdi, California, and it's late, so I'll make it short. I know I live in California, so I don't vote here. However, I am highly invested in Verdi Elementary. I have two kids there right now, and I have a two-year-old. I was president of their Parent Faculty Association last year, and I'm still on the board as secretary now. So I feel I have a right to say something, and the thing I'm concerned about, which I haven't had an answer to, is whether or not my children will still be able to attend school there, and at Billinghurst, and at McQueen eventually. I know in the past, the teacher has rejected variances, the principal, I'm sorry, has rejected variances for children going into classrooms that have over, around 30 children, because she doesn't want them to become overcrowded, and I know they don't get more teacher allocations. So despite the fact that there may be more trailers, that doesn't mean the classrooms themselves won't be overcrowded. I know last year, she said, "My son's classroom wouldn't have another teacher allocation until it was over 54 children." So I would truly like to know whether there will be more teacher allocations for those grades that have a lot of kids, and whether or not my children will be able to attend school there at all, and if they won't, where exactly they're supposed to go, because we're about a mile and a half away from there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I do have your orange sheet. Okay, last call. Anybody else for public comment? All right.
I'm Rob Harden, with, living in Verdi the last five years. My children have grown. At the same time, I was on the school board for 12 years in Oregon, and when the population started growing, we looked at bond issue options of how to take care of the growth of the children in school. It's a long-term planning process. I don't see that's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last chance. Public hearing is closed. We are now gonna take a break until 5 after 9. We will come back, and then your planning commissioners will start asking questions and getting answers. You have 45 seconds left for rebuttal. If you would like to use your 45, or you can just go, we can go into questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just wait for questions.
Thank you very much. With that, I will open this up for questions from the Planning Commission. Who would like to start?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll start.
Thank you.
So the fire chief isn't here?
No, he is not. He had to leave on a, on a run.
Okay. Nate, maybe I can, you can answer. Okay. Nate, maybe you can answer this question. Do they have a volunteer fire department in Verdi, too?
Nathan Gilbert, associate planner, yes. The Verdi area has a volunteer division.
Which- and do they handle just fires? It's not manned, then? It's just when there's a fire, whatever?
It's a volunteer fire department.
Okay.
Go ahead. Keep going.
Okay, the next thing, I'd like to talk with the wildlife biologist a little bit.
We have two of them here, so you want to tag-team them?
And I'm going to defer to him as much as I can.
All right.
As long as they just don't point fingers at each other.
Let me ask this of you gentlemen. Whoever is speaking into the microphone, please state your name for the record before you start speaking, so that when the records get typed up, we have the right verbiage with the right individual. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Kaufman.
When I look at, one was a photo or even out, I don't see a lot of vegetation of what deer eat on, you know, some of those open spaces. So, can you kind of, you know, I mean, I hunt and so forth, and, I mean, I, you know, it's bitter brush, and I know in the winter, when they have fires out toward like Battle Mountain, I know that they had fires there. They had a big kill-off about six or seven years ago, basically because everything burned up. So, kind of, when I look at that area, you know, I guess, tell me, how's that support a herd of 400 or whatever, 400 animals?
Mark Fries, Nevada Department of Wildlife. Yes, Peavine's been burned, developed. There's a lot of issues on that, no doubt, and that's why we see that population decline from 5,000 down to about 1,400. And that's all of 194 and 196, not just Peavine. But you're right, it is, it looks tough out there. But if mule deer have no place to go, they're going to persist wherever they can. And so, it may look ugly, but they're able to persist and survive there. You know, the area where the development is, isn't probably essential or crucial, you know, six out of 10 years, but a few years it is, because the snow loads do push those deer down, and they have nowhere else to go. And there's nothing further east into Reno, further south. I mean, we've pretty much crowded them into this box.
And is that partly why you see more around the neighborhoods because of the vegetation they have to eat there?
Well, we see more around the neighborhoods because we live in the neighborhoods. That's where our eyes are. But absolutely, there's the brush community there, and the brush community is really key. That's what we'd like to see up on Peavine, because it has a high crew protein, it maintains leaves, it really gets the deer through the wintertime. So what we're looking to do is work with the developer through the project process. All that open space, if we could get that into shrub community and maintained in a shrub community, that would be great. But in addition to getting everything improved, corridors, fencing, all the details worked out, there's likely going to be some additional mitigation, some off-site mitigation, if you will. So what we would likely look to do there is try and establish some shrub communities up on Peavine, and that would help attract those deer. That plan would come at a risk, and we do everything we could to keep it in place. There's a lot of recreation, fires. As Mike Savon said, shrub communities are very difficult to establish and get persisted, but we'll do the best we can.
So with, like, part of this project, part of what you're suggesting is that they also go out and plant what the deer eat?
Correct.
Is that what you're-
Correct.
You know, in part of their open space, what they've had for open space?
That will likely be what we're working with them to encourage them to do. I mean, you guys and them get the final say on a lot of that stuff. That would be one of our recommendations, as well as those corridors and drainages. Keep those open, because mule deer will come down through those and move back up, as well as, you know, after we get some of those details worked out, the avoidance-type details, do an additional impact analysis in however many acres they're taking out. Maybe we could put those back in.
I know the land behind this project is BLM?
No. It's a combination of private landowners, and further up on the hill is Forest Service.
Forest Service.
So we definitely have to go through private land to get that permission and those protections in place, or go through Forest Service and their permitting processes.
Do they have limits on roads up through that area? I mean, is there specific, you know, I know obviously the private would do, but the Forest Service, do they limit the, you know, road traffic, ATVs?
They do have a travel management plan and do that through that process. I suppose you can open a new road up there, but it does take permitting. And I can't really speak for Forest Service, but in my experience, they're not going to open up duplicate roads if they don't need to.
No, I didn't know if they had a lot of restrictions on ATV travel or four-wheel drive.
They do have some restrictions, and that's carried out through their travel management plan. But like most BLM Forest Service lands, they're pretty difficult to enforce, especially around a city center with such a high population.
Okay.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for being here so late and for all your information. As is now, what needs to be done to mitigate? If there's no change, what do you have to do to mitigate for the developer to build compared to what you would have to do with this master plan amendment?
Well, we'd work with them on both projects. Certainly, more houses means less movement, corridors between the houses across those properties, so there's going to be additional restrictions on the animals themselves, if they can even get access through there at all. But we'll work to open up as many of those corridors as we can. But it's, it won't be until we actually assess what's going to be done on the ground, minimize those impacts to whatever degree we can do, to really figure out, are there additional acres that we need to do some off-site mitigation with? That answer?
Yeah, is it, I guess, is it safe to say that with the current standard is going to have obvious less mitigation than what the proposed standard is? Correct?
I would say the, under the current land use planning, yes, it would have less mitigation associated with it and be a little easier on wildlife. Under the proposed amendment, increasing the number of houses, it's likely going to be harder on wildlife, so there's probably going to be a bigger mitigation or offset.
And this is for the birds, the mule deer, the, all the wildlife around there that was discussed?
Correct. I mean, we're talking about mule deer specifically, but it's going to benefit all wildlife. Any wildlife that uses those shrub communities, which were there before all the burns, the development, those things, we're going to try and replicate that in other areas. So it will provide benefits to other wildlife.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno, a couple of questions. Mark, maybe you can, can you explain these red dots exactly? This is one animal being tracked for over a period. I was a little confused, because it makes it look like there's animals all over the place, but it's-
Right.
It's one tracking device, right? Is that over a year period or over a season?
Correct. So here's- Let's see. This is 23 different deer collared, so that represents a very small portion of the population. The colors are different individual deer. So this primarily represents two deer. So the pink associated here and the blue associated here, which again represents just a portion of the deer that likely use this area. The collars were put on, I think they lasted for about a year and a half. Points were taken every 12 hours, so essentially two a day. So you're seeing two a day here. The portion of this deer that's within the project area was approximately 20%. So does that answer the question about collars?
Yeah, I just want to, so that represents one deer within the project area over a year.
About a year and a half.
A year and a half.
Yep, with two points a day.
And you don't know how much that deer represents as part of the herd?
No. And I'm not intimately familiar with how they collared or where they collared. That would certainly weigh in to where the deer are showing up or where they're not showing up. So I can't speak to that. I can't estimate that. We could possibly work with cowfish and wildlife to get a rough estimate, and I'd be happy to do that. Like I said before, I'm a habitat biologist. I'm not the game biologist for this area, so I don't have that intimate of details.
Okay. Next question. You talked about that this development has more mitigation involved than the current zoning as it stands right now. Right? Is that, am I to understand that?
I say that very loosely, because we haven't done a wildlife assessment of what's actually being taken out and put in.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's the, kind of, the ultimate question I have. Right now, as it stands, we're putting half of the property into open space, whereas in the current zoning, we don't know how much would be open space. Or maybe, maybe we do. Maybe, Nathan, you can answer that.
Nate?
If I may, Commissioners, Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. When we're talking about, if I'm understanding the questions, you know, the previous, the existing entitlement, the 159-unit subdivision has expired. There was 159-unit subdivision that was allowed with cluster development that was approved in the county and also approved in the city on the site. But that's no longer there. And so that was only, that subdivision was allowed through a cluster development special use permit. And for the record, previous entitlements on this site covered the same amount of area that's allocated for single-family and commercial. It did not account for any wildlife habitat mitigation at all in the tentative map approvals in previous entitlements, which was probably inappropriate. So this, I think the distinction is that the 159-unit subdivision, while it was less dense, it covered the same area. There was no, there was no discussion or conditions of approval to address habitat mitigation in those previous entitlements. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Nathan, while you're there, so as it stands right now, how many units, and this has been kicked around, how much can they actually develop on that property currently?
With the existing zoning?
Yes.
With the, well, there's that swath of SF-15 and then the remainder in LLR-1, I would assume that they had presumed the maximum allowed through the cluster development in the previous entitlement.
In the previous, okay. So 159, that's kind of the number, okay, is the baseline. I want to understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Charles, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Josh Vettori with JBR, now Sand Tech, for the record. I just want to clarify what the components of the wildlife mitigation plan would be, in case you guys don't fully understand that, kind of based on what was said right before you got Nathan up. And that would be a detailed summary of what the proponent has on the table for the project, and then an analysis of the risks based on those details, so that full evaluation of potential impacts to wildlife can be done. So there's three parts. There's what's being proposed, what are the risks/impacts, and what's going to be done to mitigate them. And in order to get to that third part, you have to have somewhat of a detailed idea of what you're looking at. And I think that kind of speaks to what Mark was just commenting on, and that is that he needs to know more specifics, so he can really hash those out. Would that be true, Mark?
Yeah, Mark Fries, that's a fair assessment. I mean, it's really difficult to make those calls right now without seeing any details in the plan.
Sure, you don't even know what you're looking at. I understand that.
Right.
Can, maybe this is a question for Claudia or staff, or can we actually condition that all requirements of the mitigation plan be followed, meaning even so much as to offset, if they need to, in other areas? You mean, like up in the Forest Service, they have to provide bitter brush up there or so forth? Can we condition that as a planning commission?
Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. There's a provision in the PUD that's proposed that would require an improved mitigation plan reviewed with Endow, the U.S. Department of Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife, thank you, prior to tentative map. If that's not adequate, or any provisions of the mitigation plan is not adequate to any of the reviewing agencies, that will be up to the Planning Commission to decide prior to approving any subdivision of the land. So while this would establish a PUD zone, they couldn't subdivide the land until that, an appropriate mitigation plan was approved by the commission.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas, question?
No, my question was answered.
Okay. Thank you. So was mine. Thank you, gentlemen. If I can ask you not to leave yet, we may be calling you back up. More questions? Commissioners, Commissioner Reno?
Sure. Nathan, could you address, or maybe the applicant? There was questions about the FEMA flood concerns and runoff concerns and how that's being mitigated, and just speak to that. I think I heard that there was one paragraph in the whole report. Is that true? And then, and then maybe speak to it. Maybe Bill-
I'll defer that to Bill Goll.
You're the one to do this.
For the record, Bill Goll, senior civil engineer. At this level, we have, very broad level, we're looking at blobs on a map, we're looking at general densities for a large area. It's really impossible to ascertain what their impacts would be to the various flood, you know, to the floodways, flood drain areas. We looked at the general major drainage ways areas in the area. We looked at where existing flood zones are labeled, and we recommend avoidance of those areas. That's a primary mitigation for those areas, is to avoid those drainage ways. We have code requirements that would be, they would have to update and do a study with each and every tentative map that would come in. And in that map, they would have to identify the amount of coverage, where the flooding is, how they're going to mitigate it. And they have to mitigate any increases in flooding. Flood volumes have to be mitigated down to pre-development conditions. So downstream, where they tie into the existing drainage ways downstream, they would have to mitigate any increases that they've created through, you know, detention, retention, and those types of issues. Also, on a water quality basis, we have code in there for post-construction storm water quality, where they will have to also provide basically a mitigation and a water quality volume or treatment for that basically first half inch. Those, all those criteria will come in with the tentative map and the studies associated with the tentative map at that time.
So, Bill, before you leave, can I piggyback on that question? And I, I think one of the questions somebody in the audience asked is, does this project increase the flood risk of any of the homes across Highway 40 or, you know, downstream?
At the time of development, with the tentative map and final map and construction, they will have to demonstrate that they have mitigated any increases from increased impervious areas by onsite detention. Their flow rates that will leave their site in each subdivision, each area, the flow volumes, flow rates have to meet the- the flow volumes, flow rates have to meet the pre-development conditions. So they will not increase any flows off, off their site by meeting our, our general code.
So like catchment ponds, those types of things?
Yeah, onsite detention.
Okay.
Commissioner Taylor?
Bill, I'm sorry, I have a question for you. There was a question by one of the residents or somebody that said, can you clarify, there is XXXAFY water, what is that number?
And? I'm hoping the applicant can answer that question, I'm not.
I apologize, it's kind of embarrassing, that was a draft. And so our civil engineer, I texted him, and he texted me back, and he said, you know, standard rates, TMAO, .7 per house, it's 280 acre feet, plus some landscape. He said it'd be about 300 and 300, or 305 acre feet at buildout. The threshold for PRS is 625, so it's about half.
Okay, so John?
Yeah.
Piggyback on a little bit, because that was a question.
Yeah.
TMAO is where you'll get your water?
Yeah.
For this project?
Yeah.
And they said they had plenty of water for this development, plus whatever other developments are planned.
You're talking water in the pipe, or water rights type water?
Water in the pipe.
Yeah, capacity. Rob has done some preliminary engineering with one of his civil engineers, working with TMAO engineers sizing the pipe accordingly to meet all of the demands for the projects, and there would be additional capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Engineering.
Commissioner Taylor?
So just to clarify, John?
Yeah.
TMAO says there's enough water for the 394 dwelling units that are planned, plus all the other development in the area.
I don't know what all the other development is.
Or the planned development in there.
Planned development, I mean, Rob, do you want to, do you know about the size of the pipe? I forget the actual size of the pipe. Okay, go ahead.
There was just a couple concerns that the water was planned for the original 159 or whatever, now there's 394.
The water, well, okay.
One person at a time, please, and, and make sure you state your name in the microphone before you start speaking.
The 159 lots were to be served by the private water system that exists out there. There was no public water system. We are bringing in an 18-inch iron ductile main line that is sized to accommodate any anticipated development in the area, designed by others, not me. I didn't need that line, but we're bringing it in anyway. Will, there will be other improvements needed to serve the entire area. I'm not curing all the water needs, but I'm bringing in enough water to serve my project and excess as well. When, the size of the pipe in the main is designed to serve the entire area. But there'll probably be incremental things that'll have to be done as demand comes online. I'm not sure what all that would be, because that's not what I was doing. But the backbone that I'm bringing in is designed to continue to accommodate development out there.
Bill, Goll, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I just, Bill Goll for the record, just touch on that, on the, on the process. Again, this is the PUD level analysis. Again, there will be a tentative map for each subdivision that comes in. During that tentative map, they'll have to demonstrate that water rights can be, can be, you know, purchased. TMAO will provide preliminary discovery for that, that they can serve the site. And then for each final map, as they come in, again, they have to have a water plan approved, approved by TMAO, approved by Washoe County Health Systems, and also the Nevada Department of Water Resources signs off on that to ensure that the water rights are there and that the water capacity, they can serve the project at that time as well.
Bill, don't leave yet. I'm going to piggyback a question real quick, and then I want to go to Commissioner Reno. I think he has a question for you. So to simplify what you've just said, is that this evening, we are not, we are not approving whether or not the developer has enough water rights or an 18-inch iron ductile pipe is enough to feed what his projected buildouts are. We, as a planning commission, will see that individually for each map, each project he brings forward, and at that time, if he doesn't have enough water, or TMAO doesn't have enough water, then the project doesn't get built, it's as he's proposing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Reno, go ahead.
That was kind of my question, and it was, I, I knew, they talked about increased infrastructure. So obviously, with such a large subdivision planned, I, I would assume additional capacity and larger tanks would be required. I don't know if you can speak to that, or we'll speak to it later.
I can't, I can't speak to TMAO's requirements.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Bill, don't leave.
Commissioner Kaufman?
This doesn't have to do with water. This has to do with the jet fuel pipeline, which somebody brought up. How far away from the property is that?
Actually, I want to thank Jim Moore for sending the email ahead of time for us as well, so we could do a little research on this. I did speak with Kinder Morgan. And that, I don't know if you can really see that on there, that red line is basically the, the Kinder Morgan pipeline. It's not, I did speak to them, they wouldn't say it's 100% the exact location, but it's primarily that location. He did state in the discussion that it's the one straight graded road out there in the area, and that, that pretty much falls right on that. We pulled that off the National Pipeline Mapping System. It's, it's kind of hard to see, because we couldn't put, we couldn't put, you know, parcel lines on there. But where it crosses the, the property, it's about 1,000 feet to the north of this development, where, where the, the pipeline crosses the property. We have other, other maps to show, I mean, the Kinder Morgan pipeline runs, you know, pretty much through Somerset, Somerset Golf Course area, and runs downtown through, through the city. Because the pipeline's there doesn't mean you can't develop around it, you have to be careful with it. And you have to, you know, develop properly in the area. But it, in this case, it really, it will not be impacted by the, by the project at all.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, next question. Commissioner Reno?
Bill, don't sit down yet. Moving on to traffic and particularly bike safety, can you speak to that? Out there, obviously more traffic means more interaction with bikes. But is there, or can there be plans to have bike lanes? I don't know, in this stage, obviously the tentative map will come up. But can you speak to that, traffic and bikes?
Absolutely, Bill Goll, for the record. US-40 is an NDOT facility. The city of Reno doesn't have control over US-40. Currently, it's a two-lane roadway with, with bike lanes striped on it. It's also designated as a bike, primary bike route. I believe it's on the Tahoe Pyramid Link and the bike route as well. So maintaining the bike lanes is a priority, because, because it is a maintained bike route. We did provide the original application and original traffic study to NDOT for review. We received no comment from them. I did also talk to NDOT district personnel as well. After it was reduced, just to give total numbers to, to them at that time, they didn't see any real concern. They did express to me that bike, the bike lanes would have to be perpetuated. As the project comes in, where we know where the accesses are, they will have to have a specific study showing turning movements, loading on those, those access points, those intersections. And if any improvements are needed, such as, you know, decelerated lanes for right turn access, median turn lanes, or any other, you know, traffic impact stuff, they will have to get approval of that study from us, and as well as with NDOT, and provide those improvements for each, each successive phase as it comes in. We did, I, I looked at their study as far as, it's high level and the whole route capacity. The route is, is labeled as a minor arterial from, basically a medium access minor arterial from RTC. Basically allows with our level of service, policy level D is the policy level of service. About 18,000 ADT would still meet a policy level of service D. For, level of 14,000, probably level of service C. The study basically loaded 90% of the traffic to, to the east, and it came up to about 13,000 ADT, which is still a policy level of service C, much lower than, and that's in the 20-year period with projections up, much lower than the policy level of service C. Now, we've dropped about 20% of that, that capacity off of it. They haven't updated the, the actual, the number to the, to the east, but it will be much lower than that.
And that only takes, sorry, and that only takes into effect this development of this parcel? Whereas other developments of adjacent parcels with larger, I mean, the capacity of those are quite large?
Yeah, this, that study took in effect the, the current, the current ADT, and then gave it basically a 2.5% per year increase up for, to the 20-year number, and then added the full, the full development at the 20-year number. It did not take into effect exactly what the other ones were, they just, they took the increase of the 2.5% per year. Again, with each tentative map application, they'll have to go back at that time, study what the existing conditions are in peak hours. They actually do on-the-ground studies with, with peak hour numbers, so we can get a, a real impact of what the peak hour numbers are, and where the intersections will be, will be impacting that in the peak hours, and so they can do mitigation based on those peak hours as opposed to the ADT numbers.
Okay, moving on. Can you speak to the dark skies? You know, there was a concern about the lights that might happen in the area, and I know we're not there yet, but if you could speak to that.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, the PUD handbook utilizes the same dark sky standards that were developed with the Mortensen-Garson Plan. It was developed with the, the Verdi communities, are most stringent and direct, and adopted concurrently, that would transfer over into this development as well, specifically related to dark sky requirements.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor?
Bill, you just kind of probably answered this, but there was a lot of questions about the egress, the access points into this development. Again, can you talk about how the tentative maps would provide some safeguards for that?
Yeah, the, like I said, main access is on, on to US, US-40, which is NDOT, NDOT roadway. But, yeah, each, each access will have to be approved at the tentative map stage. And the access management standards, NDOT has them as well as the city and RTC, it'll have to meet all those access management standards, so that we don't get, you know, approaches stacked up on top of each other, so we have the ability to mitigate and keep free flow on US-40 as well. But it will be addressed with each tentative map, so we know where the access is actually impacting US-40.
Bill, before you sit down, Chierwieski. So then at each tentative map, that ingress egress will be discussed and determined. It's not being determined tonight. That's correct, isn't it?
The, the access points are not being determined tonight. They have, they have a general plan of where they intend on them, but they have not been addressed.
So at the, at the time of the tentative maps, when they're brought before us, they're reviewed by NDOT, they're reviewed by city staff, and deceleration lanes, roundabouts, signalization, stop signs, whatever you, the engineers and NDOT's engineers agree to, is then what the developer brings forward to the planning commission and the community, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I've got a question for Nathan then, just off of that. Nathan, at, at this time, the, the developer is asking us tonight to look at 394 homes that total buildout. But it's not specific. It, that is a maximum number, but because of constraints, can that number be reduced, such as traffic, water, sewer, utilities?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, yes, that, that is a maximum entitlement. That is not a defined entitlement. Any constraint, for example, water, if they weren't able, at tentative map, they weren't able to provide water sufficient to, to service the, the division, tentative map can't be approved.
Okay, so if at the time, Washoe County School District plans for the future and develops another elementary or middle school, or increases the size of Verdi Elementary from what it is today, it could take, the, the, the additional students could, may not be a problem then? Am I right, in my assumption?
That, that schools are finding, a tentative, a tentative map finding, yeah, if, if.
But at, at the same time, if the schools, when a tentative map comes forward, if the schools can't handle it, that's a finding that we can't make for that tentative map, we do not have to approve that tentative map.
That's correct.
We can't make that finding.
If you can't make the finding, then it doesn't, it doesn't need to be approved.
Okay, so this is not the last time we see maps for this project to where it may not even get close to a buildout of 394, or it could be postponed due to infrastructure, including schools, that cannot handle the capacity of what's being offered?
That's correct, the, the PUD has a 10-year timeframe. If, if the full buildout is not achieved, that includes the commercial and the 394 units is not achieved within 10 years, the entitlement goes away. So, so they would need to come back for a planned unit development amendment at that time. So we're talking about a 10-year timeframe for them to get the tentative maps. If those, if those, whatever, whatever constraints are not in play, certainly tentative map does not need to, need to be approved. And, and the full, full potential of, of this PUD entitlement wouldn't, wouldn't be achieved.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
And just based on that comment, can we have the gentleman talk about the Washoe County School District? Again, if there are any plans for increasing Verdi, or adding additional schools, funding?
PD H R, Chief Operating Officer for the Washoe County School District. And, you know, that, that's a tough question, and we've had conversations with the developer's representative on this topic. I would almost say right now that we, well, let me back up. We're going to have discussions with our Board of Trustees on the 29th of this month, starting to talk about the growth in the Washoe County School District, and kind of an advocacy plan to hopefully start educating the elected officials and the public itself on, on kind of the restraints that we are in. I almost categorize it as being in a perfect storm, that we do not have at this time any bond capacity for schools. We just don't, and you, you've probably recognized what's gone through with AB-46 and, and even before that. We are also under a property tax cap. So even as property values are coming back, we're seeing limited ability for us to bond that money. And it could be decades before it fully comes back, you know, anybody's guess on that. The increase in growth, you know, we're just starting to see the semblance of that. We don't know where that's going to go. But we do know that according to the University of Nevada, that there is almost 30,000 unabsorbed residential lots that were approved with tentative maps or final maps at one time that have not been built. So those lots, as they're built, how are we going to absorb those students? That's the question we have. We are, at our high school level, we're approximately 94, 95% of capacity. We have very little capacity. So with this development, and we're not advocating for denial or approval, we're just giving facts. We, at McQueen High School, for instance, as Mr. Boster said, we have 14 portable classrooms, or seven portable units, each have two classrooms. We have no ability to put any more there. We're at complete capacity right now, we're at 100% capacity in McQueen High School. So any developments are a concern to us, and we're just giving that concern to you as far as facts. We do not have any ability right now to build new schools. We don't have any ability right now to add schools. We don't even have any ability right now to add portables, except that we did get, receive a state grant to add 12 more portables this year. And so we are doing that, but some of our elementary schools, middle schools and high schools have no more room for portables. We've used up all the room that we have. So it is a great question, it's one that I don't have an answer to, and that we want to have the discussion with you, with, you know, the City of Sparks, with Washoe County on trying to find solutions.
So, Chierwieski? Mr. Etchar, so Chair Wieske, so what you're saying is a school district doesn't have any future plans for expansion of schools on the west side of Reno?
We have plans as far as, in fact, I've asked our planning department to look at what, what does that thirty thousand unabsorbed residential lots mean? And what it means is ten and a half schools. It means five elementary schools, three middle schools and two high schools plus an addition on to the Monty Ranch High School. That's what it means. It means about four hundred and twenty million dollars worth of construction plus land. So, we have plans and we know where they need to be based on development growth. We just don't have the funding mechanism to pay for them.
Okay.
And this is unique and I'll say this, is in the thirty years, uh, in the past thirty years, we've had times of residential growth, obviously. We've had rapid growth, but it's never been coupled with the fact that we don't have any bonding capacity. In the past, when we had growth, we had bonding capacity to build new schools. This is kind of uncharted territory for us.
Okay, thank you. I have a follow-up question for Mr. Krompottic regarding schools and our discussion that we've just had. Mr. Krompottic, John, you, your developer understands that if the capacity isn't there in a school, when a map, tentative map is brought forward to us, the planning commission may not be able to find that, make that finding and therefore will cause a denial for that tentative map, no matter whether you've got three hundred and, it's the very first tentative map and you've got an, an okay for three hundred and ninety-four family residences. Are, are you guys aware of that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's, Nate nailed it, it's a, it's a, it's a finding at the tentative map stage.
Okay, so, so, you know, just, then just because of if, if an approval were given this evening, that doesn't give the right to build out three ninety-four, it doesn't even give the right to build out one?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wanna follow up on that? Commissioner Reno?
Yeah, Mr. Etchar. And I, and I appreciate Chairman Chair Wieske's comments there because that really helps to clarify things. Under your letter here, under, I guess, Mr. Boss, Foster's letter, dated June fourth, it's on the assumption that there's, it's still with the, the four hundred and ninety-three single-family units. And so, some of the numbers in here, I kind of feel are erroneous, they're a little bit high. In particular, I guess, the, the Verdi, it says it's about a hundred percent capacity, right? Your hundred and one base capacity, or, you know, right there, your billing Hurst is a hundred and five, but actually with the reduction of twenty percent, you're probably below that hundred mark. Am I, am I safe in saying that?
I think Mike presented, Pete Etchar for the record, I think Mike Boster gave some kind of updated numbers and I'll, I'll.
Did I miss those, I'm sorry? Yeah. Yeah, I know you gave some numbers earlier and I wasn't sure if that was adjusted here.
Right, it, it is and I led off with that.
For the record, please.
For the record, my name is Mike Boster with the Washoe County School District. Under the three hundred and ninety-four units, we are projecting ninety-six new elementary school kids, twenty-six.
What, what does that mean in base capacity? So, we were at a hundred and one percent and now what are we at?
I've got that, thanks. Looking at Verdi Elementary, just to go right there.
Yeah, just, just Verdi.
Certainly. What that does is if, if we have the new numbers, ninety-six new kids, that puts us at about eighty-eight percent capacity at Verdi.
Okay.
With the three hundred and ninety-four units. For Billinghurst, with the adjusted number of twenty-six middle school kids versus thirty-seven, we go to ninety-eight percent capacity.
And what I'm really curious about is, is McQueen High School, because those were below the threshold really and.
Exactly, understood. And McQueen High School, instead of what we had before, we're at forty-seven kids under the new three hundred and ninety-four units. The base capacity of, of McQueen is fifteen hundred and twenty-nine kids. We currently have eighteen hundred and seventy-six. Sorry for throwing a bunch of numbers at you, but that would take us to a hundred and twenty-six percent of capacity, of base capacity at McQueen.
Okay, it, that's perfect, 'cause here it says a hundred and thirty-five, now we're down to a hundred and twenty-six.
Right, yeah, that, that earlier letter, I just got the, the revised, uh, unit count a couple of days ago or yesterday.
Okay, and since you're up there.
Certainly.
Also, as I read this, the Washoe County School District has no legal authority to compel a developer to donate improvements, right?
That is correct.
The way it's, the way it's written here and it sounds like, well, I guess, is their capacity at Reno high? Obviously, Verdi works, Billinghurst works, McQueen doesn't, but does Reno? And I know there was talk about busing and maybe you can speak to that.
Certainly, as Mr. Etchar was speaking about, we, overall for our high school capacities, we're between ninety-five, ninety-six percent capacity throughout the entire district at the high school level. What happens is if you, if you do a rezoning, that's a, that's not only a contentious issue, it's a kind of a costly issue as well. If there are any new developments in that region that would be served by Reno High School, you're displacing those children, those students that would come in later on that would by right be within the district of Reno High School. So, if we start bringing kids in from Verdi, from the West Meadows Development, you're displacing future kids who may attend Reno High School. So, there may be, there may be capacity at Reno High School, there may be capacity at HUG, it may not be a lot, but it's gonna involve quite a bit of rezoning, busing and, and quite a bit of contention.
Okay, and then talking about McQueen High School, my understanding is that's kind of what's been said by Pete, that it is built out for capacity as far as modular units and you couldn't add more to that facility because of, it sounds like the, it's the auditorium and it's cafeteria and those are kind of the things that are holding it back, not necessarily the modular units itself.
That is correct. The, the modular units are intended to be temporary measures while we wait for the next bond measure to come along or the next funding source so that we build another high school, middle school, elementary school, that sort of thing. And when those are, are built, we, you've seen throughout the district, we've moved mobiles on and off of, of school sites as they're needed and they're not needed. However, like Pete was saying, we don't have that ability to, to bond right now. Our bonding capacity ran out in two thousand and twelve. It's not anticipated for another several years that we'll have bonding capacity due to, due to the tax cap. So, that's correct. Going back to your question though, McQueen High School, fifteen hundred and twenty-nine kids is the capacity, eighteen hundred and seventy-six in there now. We have kids having lunch in the hallways, we have kids having lunch in classrooms, that sort of thing. So, we have a, a situation where those three hundred and fifty that are meant to be temporary in the mobiles are filling these other spaces in, in a way that's, that's overcrowding the space.
Yeah, so I, I understand that the school district's in a hard spot here. You really don't have the funds to do it, but obviously this is not the only development that will come into play. There'll be other developments in the future, those even in Reno High, HUG area, whatever that, that supply to those high schools. And I guess that's a discussion for your board, but, but obviously to, to say that this development is, is the, the straw that broke the camel's back, I'm not sure that we can say that, but, yeah, okay, I just wanna put that out there, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Olivas.
One more, sorry. Quick follow-on to that. Commissioner Olivas, um, well, it sounds like the shift is, is at least from the school district's concern is more to the high school than the elementary school. And, and we, I guess, just a clarifying question as far as the, the, the school rooms that would be built, I guess I thought they were modulators at first and it was said that they're stick-built. What's the nature of the, the buildings that are proposed out there at this time?
I'm gonna clarify, Pete Etchar again, Chief Operating Officer. One thing I wanna clarify is McQueen, talking to some of the engineering staff, I believe the real case at McQueen High School in particular is that there is no more physical room for any more portable units or actually even stick-built at that school. McQueen has some issues as far as the, the lot size, the grading of the lot, as you know, it's kind of a sloped lot. We really have run out of room at McQueen High School for additions. We have a, many of our schools, we have an agreement with the City of Reno to have no more than three portables at any school before we have to come back for a special use permit. Many of our schools, we have reached that capacity of three, so we would have to come back for a special use permit on many of our schools. McQueen, we're at seven, so I wouldn't even wanna come back to you asking for another one, even if we had the land.
Okay, I guess that said, so the stick-built's more of a permanent room? That's not a modular? It would be designed, it just would be different construction?
Correct. Stick-built is actually adding on to the school is kind of the terminology, stick-built, I mean, it's actually addition on to the school.
Okay.
Compared to portables, which can be moved, and then there's also modulators the school have that look kind of like portables, but they're actually put on a, an actual concrete foundation.
More questions? I know we had some other issues, some other questions from the community to bring forward.
Sure, I have a question.
Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno. Maybe, Mr. Gall, maybe you can answer this. Talking about, they talked about the Reno housing plan and policy and the transit being available out there. Can you speak to that?
And I, I think I'm gonna let Nathan respond to the, the policy itself regarding transit and those types of things and pedestrian amenities and pedestrian for, for that, simple matter of, of where it's located. It's, it is far out, RTC won't, won't serve it until they have, have demand. At that point, they'll, they'll analyze, you know, the need for transit out in that area, so.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, can you jog my memory on the specific question?
They were talking about the Reno housing policy, that new developments are supposed to provide transit and bike access and so forth.
It's a policy guideline in, in the, in the housing plan, uh-huh. It is a guideline?
Oh, it's a guideline, so it's, it's something they're trying to achieve, if they can achieve it.
As, you know, and, and you've seen reference to the, to the, the existing zoning in the area. It, it's, it's a whole lot of SF six and MF fourteen and see as, as those developments come in, so warrants transit. The zoning is already in, in place. Again, you know, it would just take the actual development to, to warrant that. There's six hundred and seventy-six units entitled in the, in the Mortenson-Garson, this would be three ninety-four, you know, and so on and so forth and transit goes where, where it's warranted.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes?
Nathan, I'm not saying policy, I don't have it in front of me, but one of the main concerns was congestion. So, as a guideline, we're trying to reduce congestion. Is that correct in that guideline?
Are you talking about housing policy?
No, I think it was traffic and maybe, um, maybe you can help us out. Six point two point one, there was, she brought it up and one of the qualifiers in there was to reduce congestion along with transit.
Is this that same housing policy? The, the housing plan is extensive policies. I, I, I'm not familiar with that off, off the cuff. I don't know.
Thanks.
Nathan, I have a, Chairman Chair Wieske, I have a follow-up question to that. In our policy, aren't, aren't we trying to provide, um, small commercial areas, retail areas to support residential build-outs, to reduce the number of trips and the distance of traveling? Isn't that also part of our policy to reduce the carbon footprint?
Yes, it, it is in your staff report, I can't think of which policy directly, but that is a, a master plan policy. There's, there are at least two that reference that as far as appropriate subdivision design to specifically, as you mentioned, to reduce vehicle, vehicle trips to have a supporting neighborhood commercial. Now, the initial proposal that we saw with this development, we didn't feel was supporting neighborhood commercial, it was extensive and we weren't supporting that. As reduced with four acres, it's consistent with our neighborhood commercial types of land use designations that, that do support existing development and are, we are consistent with master plan policies to, to be part of subdivision design.
Okay, so, and there's a, and, and I don't know the policy by number either. I rely on you guys' staff to help with that, but I do remember reading something that not only does the retail or the commercial end of it help reduce the number of vehicle trips traveled, but it also provides employment, correct?
That's correct.
And that's one of our policies is to look at, at proposed developments in this case that will enhance employment, reduce traffic.
In, in walkable neighborhoods and as the policies in the PUD provide the connectivity, when, when we actually see a subdivision map, the policies in the PUD would guide that subdivision design to include biking and walking connectivity from the subdivision from Highway forty to that commercial.
So, again, what we look at when we start looking at the maps when they come before us is specifically how they're integrating policy into what their, uh, map is. Although, policy is not a finding.
No, policy's not a finding, that's, but we, we have applied those policies to the plant, plant unit development standards, which will be implemented through an actual subdivision design to create those, that walkable, bikable connectivity between residential and, and that small-scale commercial to, to service that community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Reno?
Mr. Krompottic, I know that we're looking at, for all intents, for blobs on a map.
Say again?
Blobs on a map. We're looking at blobs on a map.
Oh, yes.
And, and if I recall reading that the, the northerly two hundred feet, is that correct, is what they, you wanna kind of preserve for the, the mule deer, is that, am I right with the two hundred number?
Uh, it's more than two hundred feet.
More than two hundred. I guess my question is, it looks like, I don't know if you have a map with the, if you can put one up on the screen there?
I'm trying to get a sense of scale since you've.
Perfect. The requirement, you're saying it's one, two hundred feet, is there a number actually attached to that? Like how far from the northern line you'll start development?
I was just trying to scale it off because I got the easement in there and that was one twenty-five. It looks like about three hundred.
Three hundred feet. So, really my question is, next to the river.
No, it's not five hundred.
Uh, I'm, I'm wondering on the west side, how, how wide is that on the west side and would you stick to whatever number that is? I mean, this is, looks maybe a hundred feet, a third of what that's up there, is that, if, if we approve this tonight, you'll be nowhere within a hundred feet of that west property line, is that, can I, Pete, can I say that?
Sorry, I am not tracking, please repeat that. The west.
Yeah, the west property, really what I'm concerned about is next to the river.
Oh, keeping at least a hundred feet away on that?
Yeah, yeah, keeping a distance.
Of course, yeah, if you wanted to add a condition. I think we're well over that because, um, well, it's not well over that, it's a, it's close to a hundred feet right there, we're at next down, so we could make that work.
Okay, that's, that's, I wanna make sure because a lot of people have concerns of being next to the river and the mule deer and.
And we realize that's prime to that habitat, right?
And it's probably prime for development too, for views and vistas, so I just wanna make sure that somehow, or at least on the record, it's protected.
A hundred feet is fine, I think that's completely fair. Thank you.
Oh, actually, since you're up there?
Go ahead.
I'll ask another one. The memo that you put together that we just got on our, our desk here right now, you're capped at three hundred and ninety-four units and that's it. That's, that's the maximum build-out that you'll ever build on this and that means any kind of units. If you have a little condo, that's a unit. The question, and, and that's, that's good of you to put that kind of clarification in there, the maximum size of the hotel rooms, fifty rooms, those don't count as units if you go down that route, or do they?
That's correct, they don't count as residential units. So, that's a different use.
It's a different use, okay. I just wanted to put that on the record, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Taylor?
I had one additional question that was brought up about the utilities and easements. Can somebody address the infrastructure that's gonna be needed for that to get the utilities to this new development? So, we can get that question cleared up, please.
What, specifically on utilities?
Would you please introduce yourself before?
John Krompottic, KLS Planning, representing the applicant.
I think specifically they were talking about the utilities needed to support this kind of infrastructure and how they would get there, based on nothing being out there now, or is there something now? How are you gonna get the power and a lot of their good stuff there?
I think it had to do with electricity.
Oh, it was electricity?
Thank you.
Uh, geez, we haven't gotten to that level of detail frankly, I'm so, do, do you have any study on it? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
There's a gas main running.
For the record.
Rob Fitzgerald, sorry. You probably have to remind me every time. Uh, there's a ga, there's a gas main that runs the length of the property along Highway forty. There's power along Highway forty in, in existing, and in all discussions with the power company, they have no, no issues providing service at all for power. Water, we're bringing in. Sewer is there. There's a trunk line that went in some years ago that was sized to accommodate all the development that was projected at the time. And I will just say, I doubt half of that will probably really happen, but it's just like my project. Yes, we have 394 because we're at a very, you know, embryonic stage, but it can't go over that. It may well be under that, depending on certain restraints that we may run across as we come in again. But there is very adequate utility service out there, especially for this project.
Commissioner Reno?
Sorry to bring you back up here, Mr. Gall. Talking about water, they'll bring a trunk line or a main water line in for Tamoa, and there was concerns about wells and, you know, the safety of the water quality out there and so forth. With, with a trunk line being brought in, would the subdivision to the south have to be connected to Tamoa because it's in service area? I know that it's in the county, but I don't know if you can talk to that?
Um, I, I don't believe it would have to be brought into there. It's got its own utility. I believe it's West Meadows Utility Company. They have their wells. I believe they're, they're north of this site, just, just, just barely north of this site, and I believe there's two water towers up there. And they're served by that. I think the water lines probably come through this, this property. And, but I would assume they'd be, continue to be, to be served by their, by their, their utility company.
The water lines run through the property?
I, I believe it does. I, it's.
It would have to, I guess, right?
So, yeah.
Yeah, and so that'll be protected. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Taylor?
I have one more quick question. John, have you guys done any economic development impacts that something like this would have on the economy or jobs? We talked about the guidelines.
You know, there's, I was speaking with another commissioner about that, and we talked about, you know, if this went into full bore construction, um, gosh, I forget the number, but you're talking hundreds of construction jobs. Of course, they're construction, right? Not economic development in pure sense. So you, you won't hear me call, you know, those kinds of jobs, economic development in pure sense. I think more importantly is the economic impact because you are talking about 150 million or $200 million tax base that we can expect. I mean, Rob's talked about $400,000 houses if there was 390 of them, plus 40 or 50, who knows, 30 million of retail value or tax base value in the retail. You're getting close to 200 million, which pays for a lot of impact mitigation services and so on. Right? Thank you.
Commissioner Reno?
One more question for Bill. Sorry about the, this project, I, I know there's a bigger subdivision up into the south or the northeast there. Would they be required to have access through this parcel to their parcel for, I mean, will they, will they require access through this parcel?
Um, to be honest, I, I don't know where their access is. I think Nathan.
Do they have access otherwise?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, yeah, the, the Phase One of the Morton-Singarson Development Plan, roughly over here, if you look, sorry to make you look over your shoulder, but that Phase One area, when, when you read the Morton-Singarson overlay standards, it specifically precludes access from Somerset, which is contiguous with, except for emergency access. And so the primary access is from Highway forty with, through the property here.
Through this property.
Through this property, correct.
Okay, so it will reduce the amount of open space, at least what's being shown, correct?
Through, through a roadway.
Through a roadway and development.
There's, there's an existing easement that runs roughly, I, I don't, I don't have a map with that easement currently with me, but it, it runs roughly up here.
Okay, I just want to make sure. There's a lot of concerns about traffic impacts. Thanks.
Any more questions? Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, this for, for Mr. Campodick or applicant, maybe. I, I guess I know we're talking as referred to as blobs on a map.
Yeah, important blobs, no doubt.
Important blobs, yes. But I guess as I look at this, and there's some, a lot of, I mean, everything from the, the deer mitigation, wild, the habitat mitigation, the schools, what are some of the, the financial assurances? Are there bonding requirements, or what goes along with this PUD to ensure that, that some of these actually come through, come to fruition?
Good question. I, you know, I was talking to Mark Fries today. Is he still here? No? You know, about, he said, are you guys prepared to, we're talking about $100,000 of wildlife mitigation fees potentially, because I said.
John, can I get you to keep speaking in the mic, please?
Oh, sure, thank you.
You're going soft, thanks.
Okay. He, he, he mentioned that part of the mitigation plan, and it's not quantified right now, right? Because we need to sort of do the study, look at what is being impacted and what needs to be either like mitigation banked elsewhere, like he was talking about restoring further up on Peabody, or I'm suggesting that we do some restoration on site because it's so barren. And he was talking about $100,000. I talked to Rob about it, and he said, we'll accept that. So it's not in the PUD, but it is indirectly because we've accepted the wildlife mitigation plan to their satisfaction before there's anything approved, and that's subject to the first tentative map. So that's one. What was the other that you asked for on fee commitment?
Well, I guess, I guess most everything we've talked about here tonight, from the wildlife to the schools, the new stick-built schools, the, the fire engine, some of the improvements, the roadways, I guess, just without asking for, for an actual bond or performance bond on all this, what, what would be, how do we get this from the point where we are and take this leap to entitle this with a large increase in number of units? What are the assurances that a quality project is gonna actually come to fruition?
Yeah, I, I guess that's, it's an unknown, right? Because if there's 250 units built, you don't get another building permit until he makes a cash payment for, what is it, a $500,000 fire apparatus, right? So that's the assurance on certain level of impact, and then the mitigation has to be, you know, that it's triggered and, and we gotta do, some of it is lump sum. Others, right, we have systems for. Traffic impact fees is about $3 million on a per-unit basis, right? Sewer connection fee is by incapacity of interceptors and downstream at the plant, and that's about $3 million. So, you know, it depends on what impact issue you're talking about. Some is built in fee structure, others is built in volunteers by the developer on lump sums. I hope I answered your question. I, please, I, I'm not, I'm not dancing, I promise.
Well, no, I, I guess that's kind of part of what it's hard to get our head around here, is that, that this is, uh, we're still, we're given some entitlements potentially that, that there's a lot of unknowns, and, and how can, just trying to grasp that.
The unknowns, yeah. Different, guess how you look at it. I think of, the unknowns become certain if the development is real. I mean, you got all the provisions in the handbook to take care of the mitigation. It's all in there. And, I mean, if you're talking about somebody's ability to pay at some point, geez, that's, yeah, that's getting into the unknown. Thank you.
John, can I follow up on that?
Yeah, please.
Chair Weiski, so what's before us tonight is planning for the future, but it's not, it's, it's my understanding and, and the way that we've always dealt with this before is that this is not your blank check to move forward. Is that correct? The way the PUD is written, you still have to come forward with developments every phase in your tentative map, correct?
Development.
That's how we control accounts.
That's exactly right, yeah. Yeah, like, you mean, in the case like Bill Gall talked about the traffic studies, right? A new access point based on a certain number of units. That requires traffic study and update to the study.
Okay, the same thing with the fire truck.
Same thing.
We have a, a single-family build-out number that when the development builds to that number, then a fire truck is purchased and presented to the city of Reno.
Yeah.
Okay. The same thing with walking trails, public access points. Those are, have trigger points based upon.
We have trigger points for the parking lots and for the trail system, that's right. And you gotta deliver it, or you don't get any further, future lots, building permits.
So if you don't do it in a certain phase or at a certain request for build-out, you don't get that permit or any future permit.
That's exactly right.
And those come before the planning commission in the future.
Yes. Tendative map and special use permits. We've got several use permits, as you know. Grading, drainageway crossings, drainageway disturbance, that's, that's basically what it is, but they do go hand in hand with the tentative maps.
Okay.
These kind of project permits.
I have one question that hasn't been brought up tonight.
Yeah.
I heard the term used this evening referring to the existing condition of the property as open space. Is this legally defined as open space?
No, it's not. It's.
What is the def, legal definition of open space?
Uh, I don't know the legal definition, and I know 10 people have 10 different answers on open space. It's a tough one. But i, i, if you wanted to get closest to legal, maybe we should ask the city attorney. I would say the amount of open space that's zoned today is open space, right? On, on the zoning map today, there it is, right there on Nate's map. The rest is undeveloped zone property for development that just happens to be city.
Is open space private property or public property?
This is private property, open space.
For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, there is no open space zoning on the property currently. There's unincorporated transition, LLR one and SF 15, and this is private property.
Okay.
So if the private property owner, which happened in Ballardini Ranch, when that was a contentious issue, they literally fenced the property off and hired security guards to escort hikers that were using it. This is private property. It could be done that way. And as, as the PUD has proposed, they've proposed, submitted, you know, several trailheads that would become public property and privately maintained to trailheads, trail access, which would provide legal easements for public access on this private property.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
If I can just add in really quick, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, and just, I think, Nathan, I'm just clarifying what Nathan said. There is actually 15 and a half acres of zoned open space.
Excuse me?
But it is private.
My eyes are glaring. It's so late. That, and that, that, yes, correct, and that, that is on the most eastern parcel, and that's not subject to, to development. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Nathan?
Go ahead, Commissioner Olivas.
I'm not sure if this is you or not, somebody, it came up about the, the houses across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And that was a former mobile home park. Is that, is that correct?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, the original subdivision was for a mobile home community in Washoe County, correct?
Okay, and is that why, because I'd read in here that the, the lot sizes in there were about 6,000 on average? Is that?
The median lot size is 6,000. I ran a GIS analysis of the subdivision. Lots ranged from 4,000 to 8,000. The median's 6,000, almost on the dot.
Okay, so, so with that, this LDU, 10 DU density or dwelling units per acre, they're exceeding that. That's not, that was probably the mobile home zoning at the time?
The, the average of, of the River Oaks subdivision would be equivalent to a six, a single-family SF six, 6,000 square foot lot. That's how the density transfers, and compare that to the net dens, the, the, the West Meadows PUD would be less than SF nine. So while the area covers more, yeah, there's more units, the overall density is, is considerably less.
I had one other question.
Commissioner Olivas?
For the fire chief, who was fighting a fire. I don't know who would want to field. Fred?
Fraternal Committee Development Director, the fire chief was called out to a third alarm fire down DeMony Ranch, so we'll do our best to, to represent him.
Okay. I, I guess there was a lot made and, and a lot of questions, and that's why he came and, and was prepared. I guess one question I had, and a lot of the focus was on the response time and various response times, I guess, how could, or could this development impair response times to any of the current residents?
To be your question, how would this development impact the existing residents?
Yeah, he focused on response time to this development. How would this development affect any response times to any current residents that they currently respond to that are not as part of this development? Or is there, is there gonna be any degradation of service?
Uh, what, what the chief did say was that, are you gonna put it, what the chief did say is that for this general area, he had the times that, that he put out there. Something I, I wanted to emphasize that the chief and I talked about. We, we talked about the standard of coverage, which was six to eight minutes, which you've heard in the past, six to eight minutes on, on coverage. That's for 85% of the time. The 15% is outside of the eight minutes. So the, the 15%, that is basically at, at the discretion of, of our, our top firefighter within the city, which is our, our fire chief. If it's a 30-minute response time for that 15%, that may not work out. I'm just throwing that out as an example. If it's eight minutes and 30 seconds or nine minutes, that is, is an acceptable response time for the Reno Fire Department. And again, these are just some of the discussions I've had with, with the fire chief.
Well, I guess I'm not quite sure if that answers where I'm going, but I'm just looking at the map. The, does, does that same station also respond to perhaps a fire in the industrial area further up the road?
So the, the, actually, you can kind of see that right here, just within the city of Reno, we, we have our, our standard of six to eight minutes. We have some areas that are outside of the eight minutes, which would be the 15%. The short answer, it shouldn't impact the existing residents. Right now, we respond to Boomtown within, I think the chief said, six minutes and, and 20 seconds, or he had some specific numbers. But we respond to somewhere like Boomtown, which technically has a higher response time because it's a commercial area. You would see that also in our downtown area. So we're not seeing any, any changes within that response time. Part of the mitigation is to have that fire suppression vehicle located at Station 11. Station 11 is one of our core stations representing or servicing the western por, portion of the city of Reno.
Could I ask a follow-up question? Commissioner Reno? The, the fire chief drove the site, I assume, and I think I read, at the speed limit. If, if an apparatus has lights on, do they get to go over the speed limit by how much is it, you know, because that actually improves the response time, correct?
Fraternal Committee Development Director, I, I'm not gonna get into the details of the operations, but I do know when I see flashing lights, I pull over.
And they get to go a little faster?
They go a little, I, I think they go a little faster. I'm pulled over, I can't tell, but they do go through lights. When the chief did do his, his run, he stopped it. He didn't have his lights on. He, he just, he went the speed limit just to get a more of a conservative aspect on it.
Perfect, thanks.
Commissioner Taylor?
Fred, while we're talking about fire, you're the pretend fire chief right now, one of the questions that we had last time was, that's great that they would bring in a fire truck, but what about the extra bodies to man that fire truck?
So right now, we, we do have a, a fire plan. Again, Station 11 is one of our core stations, meaning if we didn't have any other fire stations within the west, western portion of, of the city, Station 11 would be one of our core stations that would be manned. Speaking with the fire chief, we do have adequate resources to man that station, Station 11.
Any further questions? Okay. Before we go to discussion, um, I was, just handled a letter a few minutes ago, um, that, from Sierra County Fire Protection District Number One, that we were supposed to have read into, uh, the meeting minutes during public comment, and before we go to discussion, I'd like to read this in case there's any further fire questions, okay? So, uh, a letter from Sierra County Fire Protection District One, "To whom it may concern, the Sierra County Fire Protection District Number One provides fire and rescue service to portions of Verdi, California. Our district is also in the early stages of considering annexation of the remaining portions of Verdi, California, areas that are only currently served by agreement between Sierra County, California, and Washoe County, Nevada. The proposed West Meadows project would bring between a hundred and fifty-nine and four hundred and ninety-three new dwelling units to that portion of Verdi, Nevada, that is adjacent to the potential annexation area and in close proximity to that portion of Verdi, California, already in our district. We are very concerned about the impacts the subject development will have on our ability to provide services to that portion of the community that is in California. Clearly, some portion of the new residents will participate in recreation activities such as hiking, sightseeing, and off-road travel in California. Those new uses will create demand for medical care, rescue, and unfortunately, fire suppression. We ask that you consider our concerns first by limiting the development to density consistent to your current zoning, and secondly, by encouraging the proponent to enter into meaningful discussions with our district about how to mitigate the impacts of this proposed development. Sincerely, Richard Madalena, Chairman of the Board, Sierra County Fire Protection District." I don't know if that opens up any questions for anybody, commissioners, if so, speak up. Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Taylor, John, have you guys talked with these folks?
Response into the microphone, please, John, for the record.
For the record, we have not spoke with them. John Krompottic.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Reno.
Um, Fred, do you have a second? So, this sounds a lot like, uh, jurisdictional problems, and, and they're saying that the, the increase in people will increase their demand. Um, obviously, as a city, it sounds like we can cover this portion of our property. Is there any current consideration for jurisdictional and, and how that happens if, uh, say, a resident's up in Dog Valley from the subdivision? I, I, I'm just curious how that works.
Thank you, Frederick Turner, community and development director, uh, very good question, uh, my understanding that this letter just came in this afternoon, I don't know if our fire chief has had an opportunity to take a look at that, I have not had this discussion with our fire chief. So, uh, unfortunately, I, I don't have an answer, uh, for that, um...
Fred, if, if I may, Chair Wieski, I, the date of this letter is July 8th, and as far as I know, it was hand-delivered today, July 9th. It's just information for the record.
That's my understanding, it was delivered today, uh, this afternoon.
Okay. Thanks.
So, sorry.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Comments? Commissioner Kaufman.
Um, looking at, uh, uh, the master plan consideration...
Commissioner Kaufman, can I interrupt you real quick? Community development director Fred would like to make a statement.
Of course you can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Frederick Turner, community and development director, I was just, uh, told that, uh, we believe Trucking Meadows Fire Protection District has a, is in mutual aid, mutual aid, aid agreement with, uh, Sierra County, uh, Fire Protection District. So that, that would essentially be unincorporated Washoe County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kaufman.
So, uh, the two findings, uh, A and B, um, I, I can make those. When we look at the zoning map amendments out of the twelve conditions, uh, condition B, uh, I can make that finding based upon their forty-five percent not being developed. Condition E, uh, provides recreational needs, they talked about the trails, the, uh, parking lot for, uh, to the lake, um, uh, F, you know, that comes later when they do a tentative map. H, um, uh, for those facilities, public access sidewalks, again, that, those all come with a tentative map. To ensure the development of land, uh, and physical limitations, um, I don't have an issue with that. And then L, to ensure the development and adequate supply of housing for the community, again, I can make those findings, so, um...
If I can just jump in really quick, those are findings that need to be addressed at the tentative map, but you also need to be able to make those findings for a zone change as well, so if you could address those.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, the zone map.
As well, please, thank you.
Yeah, that, for the zone map. Yeah, that, so, but I can make all those findings, so I'll support this project.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor?
Commissioner Taylor, I guess, um, like Claudia said, you have to be able to make all the findings. And I could probably make most of the findings, but there are absolutely two that I cannot make, which is B. And the reason why is it says to promote the conservation of open space.
Under which, for the master plan or the zoning map?
Both. It doesn't say to mitigate, it says to promote. And what we were, what I felt that we were presented with is to mitigate. And then the big one is M, to ensure the protection of existing neighborhoods. We heard from over a hundred people here today in these neighborhoods. So I have a real hard time being able to make that finding, and if I understand, we have to be able to make all the findings. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That's correct. Okay, so that's my position moving forward.
Okay. Discussion?
I, I just want to ask, Commissioner Reno, um, just want to clarify, for a master plan amendment, uh, a minimum of a supermajority have to support the master plan amendment, is that correct?
That is correct. And what we would need, because we have five sitting members tonight, is we would need a five-zero vote to pass or deny. A four-one or any less than five-oh is a technical, technical denial, and it will go to city council that way.
On appeal, probably, okay. Okay? Thanks.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, as I looked through the, the findings, as I, um, visited the site, and as I read all the information, and as I, I looked at it, like, uh, Commissioner Kaufman, I, I started to say, okay, B, I can make finding B easily, I can make finding E, finding F, uh, H. And because, and, and to, to Ms. Taylor's, Commissioner Taylor's, uh, item M, I can even make that. Uh, there is a good buffer of separation between this property and, uh, downtown Verdi. And I understand that some of the people may go to the downtown, but I think it still preserves that neighborhood. And, and, and I understand, this is almost like a separate neighborhood in itself in Verdi. Uh, the River Oaks is probably a separate neighborhood in Verdi as you get down to it. Um, and so I can make that, 'cause it does kind of protect that, and, and with that, eighty percent of the traffic's heading east, and so I can make all the findings, and I would be in support of this. But again, this doesn't mean this is the end here, and it sounds like, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot to go on. Even if it gets approved tonight, ladies and gentlemen, there's still tentative maps that have to come forth. And, and then each one of those, we'll, we'll, we'll start to really see what the lots look like, we'll start to see where the trails go, uh, where the roads go. Uh, but it may not even get passed tonight, but what I'm saying is, there is still a lot of steps, a lot of steps before this actually becomes a subdivision with houses on it. And, and I, uh, I appreciate the, the developer in saying that, look, we're gonna limit this to a maximum non-units, and, and I think that's a great thing, because to create and to actually, um, to get to that, that cap of three hundred and ninety-four, it may not be possible. Uh, but, you know, there, there's been a lot of good, good things I see in this project, meaning the mule deer will have some mitigation that will help to protect them, whereas now there is nothing. There is nothing to help to protect the mule deer in there, and the shrubbery and so forth, and they will do things to help, uh, maybe even help that herd, uh, I'm not sure. I mean, it's hard to say, as, as we, we've heard from the biologists, what exactly, um, we don't know exactly what the impact is on the mule herd, what will happen here, we just don't know. Um, they say that it will probably be negative, but we're not sure about that, and, um, but, but at any rate, I can make the findings, and so I'm in support of this project to move forward, to so we can start to see some structure and start to see what it is. Thanks.
Yes. Commissioner Olivas, hold on one second. Claudia, go ahead.
Um, just a reminder that you have, um, master plan amendment.
Yes.
And a zone change in front of you tonight, so, um...
I know, that's on the zone change.
I know you're in the discussion period, but just bear in mind that you have two different sets of findings to make. So when you are, um, moving forward on a motion for the master plan, uh, those findings are listed on page seventy-one of the staff report, um, and there are findings A and B, or considerations A and B, and you just need to find also that it, that it overall conforms with the, um, master plan in general.
Of the city, yes.
And then you can go into detail on the zone change for the other findings.
And with that, sort of finding A and B, but also each of the NRSs and the items under that that are stated behind that, is that correct?
Those are for the PUD.
Yeah, for the, yeah.
For the zone change.
For the zone change.
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas, would you like, do you have any discussion?
Yeah, um, I guess, uh, looking at this, uh, discussion, the zoning map amendment, um, I can make those, I can, I can make those findings. The one I'm, I'm up on would be under PUD and, uh, committed over, and to the extent the plan departs from, uh, um... To the extent the plan departs from the, the zoning regulations applicable, um, to the property, and is it in the public interest? And with that, I, I, I guess there's a lot to be determined, um, and, uh, I, I don't really have, I'm not convinced for that extreme of a change from one fifty-nine, the number we've been using, whether it's one fifty-nine or, or close to it, all the way up to three ninety-three, that's a two-and-a-half times, uh, increase plus the commercial area, um, that's a significant enough change that, that I'm not sure that, uh, it's entirely in the public interest. I think it could be, um, given the right project, but, and, and this sounding more clear, but, um, I think there's too many unknowns for that dramatic of a change in my mind. So with that, I guess the, I'm confined for the zoning map amendment, but not necessarily the, uh, the master plan amendment.
Okay. Very good. Um, Chair Wieski, I can, um, make the, the findings, uh, under the master plan consideration. Um, I believe it, it bears relation to the planning and physical development of the city, and is, uh, so prepared in a way that it may be adopted by, uh, city council, um, for a basis of physical development of the city. You have to understand that before development can happen, you have a basis, and that's what this is. It's not the development, it's the basis for it. Um, and so therefore, I can make the, um, master plan findings. On the zoning map, um, amendments, um, I, I did have, uh, some concerns, those concerns have been addressed by the developer in, in that there is a cap on all residences built, um, at three hundred and ninety-four. It doesn't matter whether it's multifamily condos, single-family homes, um, it's all one number. And, and it's about their PUD, does their PUD, which is the guidelines for future development, is that what, that's what allows me to make these findings, especially with clarifications tonight, that if the developer doesn't have certain things in place, he isn't getting his permit, whether it be his first permit or his tenth permit. At any time, the planning commission or city council can not make the findings, and the project stops. We still don't know, because this is not the night, it's not the process, whether it will be three hundred and ninety-four homes or a hundred and ninety-four homes, because that's not what is proposed tonight. It is the guidelines of what not to exceed. By the time this development were to start, Washoe County School District may have in place their future growth plans and the finances to cover it. They, other entities involved in infrastructure may or may not have their, uh, infrastructure in place, and therefore, that might be the finding that is not made. Um, it's, it's a place to start, this is not the place to end. As it was mentioned earlier, there's a lot of steps ahead, and there's a lot of work ahead, but the PUD is in conformance, I find it in conformance with my findings in the way that the city of Reno, uh, the city of Reno's growth pattern has been and, and is planned for in the future. So, um, I can make the findings for both, and when motions are made, I will be voting in favor of both. And with that, I will entertain more discussion from, um, commissioners, otherwise I'll entertain motion for, for vote.
And just a reminder, Nathan did hand out a, Claudia Hansen for the record, a memo with revised, um, motion.
Commissioner Reno, and can I say, at least on the motions, I really like that the, um, they, they say that everything we discuss tonight becomes part of the conditions of this motion. Condition A, the approval of the West Meadows estate, so when we discuss caps, that's part of the motion, when we discuss underfeed off the offset of the, of the river, that's part of the motion. So all of that discussion tonight, and all that's been agreed to, is part of that motion.
Commissioner Kaufman, in the case of LDC 14-00023, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution, and recommend city council do the same, subject, subject to conformance review by the regional planning agency, and I can make all the findings.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Reno, I'll second the motion, and I can make the findings for the, um, master plan.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So, I have three, excuse me. Thank you. It's the last time.
Shame on you all.
Security, will you please come in here? We'll take a break for five minutes. Meeting, we'll explain to you what has just taken place with the vote. As I explained earlier, in order for approval of this project to go forward tonight, you need, the applicant needed a 5-0 vote. The vote this evening is what we call a technical denial. It was a three in favor, two opposed. So, with a technical, excuse me, technical denial of the master plan amendment, we do not even entertain a vote on zoning. It's automatically denied. What happens now is it will go from us to City Council as a denial. Does not require an appeal. It goes straight to City Council as a denial. City Council will hear this. It will be agendized, it will be a meeting very similar to this evening, I hope, okay? All the same information brought forward, everything that all sides have done, brought forward. If City Council approves the master plan amendment and overturns the Planning Commission, then the zoning map amendments will come back to us one more time to be heard and voted on. From there, that decision, be it a denial, technical denial, approval, whatever, will have its own conditions on how it can still go back to City Council, at least through the appeal process, okay? So, that's what has just taken place this evening. It is a, it will be agendized. I'm sure you guys, through the coalition in Verdi, who gets great information out, will get information out. Those of you who are within 750 feet may be noticed, they will be, you will be noticed. So, there will be lots of notice going around as soon as it is agendized for City Council, okay? And with that, I will close this hearing item, and thank you all for the stayed late. I appreciate the respect that you showed us as a commission. Have a good night, good luck with your project in the future. With that, we have more agenda items to discuss. We move on to item number eight of our agenda, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning.
Please, hey, folks.
Can I, are we still carrying on a meeting in here? Can I ask you to take your conversations outside? Thank you. Item number eight on our agenda is Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Our meeting has been postponed until July 23rd, Washoe County Chambers, 9th Street. Next on our agenda item, discussion regarding the definition of a church in Title 18. Since that was brought forward by our chairperson, Dagny Stapleton, if you guys don't mind...
Chair Wysocki, I'm sorry. On the previous item, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, you were to recommend to City Council to appoint a planning commissioner to be on the board.
Okay. Very good. Well, I apologize, we'll step back to that right now, then. There are three of us that sit on Truckee Meadows Regional Planning, that is Jason, Commissioner Woosley, Commissioner Stapleton, and Commissioner Wysocki, and I thought we did this the other way. In the past, we've always made the nomination at the Truckee Meadows, at the regional planning meeting, and then brought that back to City Council for recommendation.
I believe you've made the recommendation from this body to council, and they make the appointment.
Okay. That's okay, we'll, I'll, I know that we voted on them before, so maybe it was just a, something that was done by...
And I believe it's Jason that was termed out?
Correct.
Yes, Jason was termed out of that position, so you need to replace him.
To replace Jason?
Yes.
Okay. So, oh, because he sat in for Dennis, I think, or...
I don't remember. We were informed that he was termed out.
Okay. Okay, so, would anybody like to sit on regional planning? We meet once a month, every other month, and discuss regional planning. Commissioner Taylor? Would, is there a motion to nominate Commissioner Taylor?
I will move to...
Commissioner Reno, I'll move to nominate Commissioner Taylor to be on the Regional Planning Commission.
I understand.
Because it's not me.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second.
Okay. Any other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You win. It's unanimous.
Can I say, Commissioner Reno, I really, I would like to be on it, but I am so busy I just cannot justify that, but you'll do good.
Now, we can move on to item number nine regarding definition of a church. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to continue it until Chair Stapleton is back, because that was her item. So, you guys good with that?
Good.
Do you need a motion?
Motion for continuation?
Motion moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Claudia?
Just a few updates from council meeting. The warehouse distribution ordinance was adopted, the medical marijuana establishment ordinance was adopted, the Life Church zoning map amendment near Demone High School was approved, a first reading, and the heart-to-hand zone change was approved for a first reading, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Now, that's announcements for training?
That was all staff announcements.
Okay, that's all staff announcements. Very good. Let's see if I can flip the page. Commissioners' suggestion for future agenda items, we're already carrying forward Chair Stapleton's idea. Any other discussion items anybody would like to bring forward? Can you turn your mic on, Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, we had a few on the list from last time, I believe, I don't know what we do to follow up on those, or just wait until they come back.
They will be coming to a planning commission meeting near you.
Beautiful.
In the near future.
No other items proposed. Public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. With it now being open, Michelle, do we have any requests to speak for us?
No, we do not.
Okay. Anybody remaining would like to speak under public comment? Please come forward. Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment. Motion for adjournment?
Motion made.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Good night.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody did a great job tonight.